Drop down to into the sixties. That is sad to say, how many people wish they had our weather.
I know, right?
We're gonna have today's invocation by Pastor Dan Phillips and pledge allegiance by Commissioner Pickens.
Commissioners, as we open this morning, we have seen some very depressing news in a way in our local newspaper. We know that Billy Graham, who's had very many ties with our city and our county, is now in heaven. Billy had a very, very personal connection to Putnam County. When he would finish his crusades, many times he would just be emotionally and mentally drained. And he would call Cecil Underwood and they would talk. And Cecil Underwood would tell William Franklin Graham, will you just come on down to Palatka because I'm gonna get Willie Frank Chester to take you fishing. And so my Uncle Frank would take Billy Graham fishing and they'd just sit there on a boat on the St. John's River and they would just talk. I would love to have been a horsefly in that boat to hear some of those conversations. And then this morning, we saw that Charlie Baird has passed away. When you read Charlie Baird's obituary, I don't think you could find another gentleman that loved Putnam County as much as Charlie Baird. So we want to remember their families. We want to remember their friends because we've lost a very good friend with Billy Graham's passing and Charlie Baird's. Let's pray. Father, as we are assembled here in this place this morning, we do remember friends, very close friends, that have gone on now before us. And Father, we ask that through your Holy Spirit and through the friends that are left behind, that grieving families are touched in the way that we have been touched by Billy and by Charlie. And Father, I pray for this commission that is assembled here this morning. Gentlemen that have committed themselves to represent this county, to be genuinely concerned, to find solutions to problems in this county, to bring the very best to us, to make our county better. So Father, I ask that you guide them in their deliberation, that Father, you prepare them for whatever challenge may lie before them. So that we, the county that have placed our trust in them, can see them at their very best, leading us to be a place where we want to live, a place where we want to bring other business, a place where we want to bring others, so that we can all enjoy all that you have provided for us. So guide them and us, I pray. In Jesus' name, amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation of liberty, individual, liberty and justice for all.
We're gonna take this moment also to introduce you to our newest staff member here, Mr. Matt Reynolds. I know that you're not really excited about saying anything, are you?
You don't get to push it.
I don't have to push it, okay. No, I'm just excited to be here. You know, I have been really looking forward to it and really looking forward to helping the county become better, so, thank you, everyone.
We're glad to have you here. Yes, thank you, thank you. At this time, we'll have approval of our minutes from February 13th.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the minutes from February 13th.
Okay, we have a proper approval.
I'll second.
Proper second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? All right, let's move on. We'll go to the Putnam County Library.
Good morning to each of you in your respective places, Chairman Goddard, Mr. Suggs, Mr. Manning, Matt Reynolds, and Mr. Smith. Well, Darlene's time with us is basically up, as of tomorrow at five, no earlier than five. The Putnam County Board of County Commissioners, the Library Board, and all of Putnam County would like to honor Darlene Walker for her years of dedicated services to our residents. Ms. Walker was hired in 2006 to be our Youth and Family Services Coordinator. In 2011, she was promoted to Special Collections, where she garnished the archival information. In 2016, she was promoted to Branch Manager of the Bosswick Branch. In her years of service, Darlene brought multiple programs to Putnam County. One in particular was the Yellow Ribbon. And the Yellow Ribbon is, we tie these yellow ribbons for Veterans Day. And the family members of active-duty members get to come to the libraries of any library in Putnam County and pick up a yellow ribbon to advertise that they have a family member that's active duty. She also brought the Paper Airplane Flight School, which involved over 250 kids with her time in the library system. The other program she brought was Fiber Art, which led to the quilt show, which brought in hundreds of people. That program extended from Palatka to Bosswick. I think they followed her when she transferred to Bosswick. And then we had a science program, it's called STEM. And I know Mr. Turner doesn't like acronyms, so I'm gonna tell him what STEM is. STEM is Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math. And that program brought in quite a few children. But the program that we were the product of her was the Angel Tree. The Angel Tree allowed patrons to bring in books and donate directly to children who were in protective care. In her time of service here in Putnam County, she brought in over 2,917 books for those children. With that being said, we just wanna wish Darlene the best upon her retirement as she retires. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, it's absolutely my honor to present to Ms. Darlene Walker this plaque for over 11 years of dedicated service to the citizens of Putnam County, February 27, 2018.
Before you sit down, I certainly wanna take a picture.
You have any words?
I've got plenty of words.
We'll talk first then. All right. It's been a pleasure to work for Putnam County. I appreciate the opportunity. I've had a whole lot of fun. I've met a passel of wonderful people. And I'm going to miss you all terribly until tomorrow afternoon. Then I'm gonna go home, take care of my critters, do some quilting, and relax. I'll be at the library probably Monday morning because I forgot that I don't have to go anymore.
I'll stop her at the front desk.
It's been fun, and I do appreciate you letting me play in your playground. Thank you. And Commissioners, I know you like each other a lot. You need to get closer. Chip, I've got everybody, okay? Are you ready? Awesome. I'll send them to you.
This time, we're gonna take a short recess. We're gonna move to the Port Authority. At this time, we'll have the approval of our minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the Port Authority meeting February 13th.
Second. We have a proper first, a proper second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not in favor, same sign. Okay, any new business?
Mr. Chairman, you want to give any kind of, you or Mr. Manning, want to give any kind of update on the lease at the Port Authority at this time, or is it still in limbo?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Manning can certainly chime in, but I've had no further communications, I'm aware of, that we've got any movement on the lease itself. The county has responded to some questions and concerns with the lease, it's been sent back out, and I don't believe we've had any further communications at the county manager's level, but I will certainly refer to the county attorney if he's had any further communications.
We don't, we certainly don't have a document at this point in time. They did, one of the principals of the business reached out late last week, and I directed him to Brian Bergen because he was basically wanting to renegotiate the terms that had been discussed previously, so that's the latest on it, and I haven't, there has been no follow-up since then.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, well, that'll close the new business. Any comments?
Have none.
Seeing none. Now, let's move to old business. Any old business that we need to discuss?
None, Mr. Chair.
Seeing none, we'll now close the meeting for the Port Authority. And at this time, I'll ask Ms. Linda Myers if she would come forward and give a recognition.
I'm glad you had to say it, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Kenny Downs representing the Finance, and Susan, and of course Terry Suggs and his administrative staff, and as well the folks in the audience, both TV and here, because recognizing hard-working folks who are your neighbors, who every day come Monday through Friday to make a difference in our lives of our citizens, is a joy. So I first want to invite up Katie Robinson. Katie, please join me. Katie is an important person. Wait till you find out why. Not only 20 years of service to Putnam County, but she is our Chief Financial Officer at the Tax Collector's Office, meaning that every city and every taxing authority and the county commission, she is the person who sends those checks to you. So she's been doing that for 20 years, but let me tell you where she started. Hired by Ken Mahaffey, my predecessor, who we all know did a great job in the office and did a good job in hiring Katie Robinson. She started first in 97 with the office as a tax clerk. I wanna say Jim Kircher was your boss at that time, and y'all remember, some of you are older than 50, might remember Jim Kircher. He was certainly a person of high acclaim in our community, from the private industry and banking. She served as a finance assistant for many years before being promoted to being our director. November 2002, she became a designated by the Department of Revenue Certified Florida Collector's Assistant, which is a result of requirements of class, and passing tests, interestingly enough. Still had to take tests, and you do today as well. Katie currently serves in the main office in Palatka. However, as you know, her financial numbers come from all over the county and impact all of our taxing authorities. So it is with pleasure that I have had the opportunity to serve for the past five years for a very talented, committed-to-Putnam County young woman, Katie Robinson. Please join me. Can't ask Joe because we don't have an official camera person anymore. I've asked the sheriff to take a picture of the two of us. Is this a highly technical? Sorry, my mouth is probably open for that one. I deserve it, I deserve it. Thank you, Katie, thank you so very much.
Thank you so much.
And we have, yeah, it's, we have a lot of fun serving Putnam County in our office, and we appreciate the citizens giving us that chance. Also, we have a 25-year veteran in the Tax Collector's Office, which is astounding since she's only maybe 40, I don't know. I'm gonna invite up the manager of our motor vehicles, that's Patsy Treadwell, who I shall say right now will be in front of you next year, celebrating 30 years as your Tax Collector Office member, so.
I started when I was 12.
Exactly. We're not modest here, and.
The child labor laws were not enforced at that point.
Patsy Treadwell.
Hi, thank you for having me today. I've been entrusted with speaking about Marlene. I don't speak in public well, y'all, so I apologize. But Marlene started with us in January of 1993. She began her career with the Tax Collector's Office as a title clerk. In 96, Marlene began serving as Branch Manager of the Crescent City Office, where she served for many years before being brought back into the main office in Palatka. In November of 2007, she received the designation of Certified Florida Tax Collector Assistant by the Florida Department of Revenue. And as Mrs. Myers has said, that means we went to classes, or she did, went to classes, passed those classes, and the Department of Revenue allows us to have that honor. Marlene is currently assigned and serving in the Crescent City Office as a CSR Specialist. Marlene's public purpose extends well beyond Putnam County. She is also a military veteran, and we're very proud of that fact. Congratulations, Marlene, on 25 years of service. And just on a personal note, I've worked with Marlene, again, come on down, hon, for 25 years that she's been with us. She and I have been together, we worked together, hand in hand, in the Crescent City Office for about eight years, and we raised our children. We had the good times and the bad times and the hard times in Crescent City, and we love each other and we respect each other, and I respect her deeply for all the work that she's done for us and all the time she stuck with us and come in whenever we weren't feeling real well, or like I say, if we'd had a bad night with the kids, or that type of thing, and we were always there for each other to talk to and know what was going on so we could make it through the day. So we're really proud to have her with us, and I'm proud to know her as a friend.
Thank you.
I would like to get a picture with Marlene. I know I look a lot older than Marlene, but we actually graduated high school together, Crescent City High School, back in 1978, is that correct? So I'd love to get a picture with you.
Just started saying that, we weren't talking about that. Thank you for that, Bill. Mr. Chairman, if you'll indulge me for two quick points I want to make. Commissioner Harvey mentioned to me yesterday a question out of the satellite. Their connection to the state of Florida Motor Vehicles was down. That's a terrible inconvenience to all of our citizens. And I just checked my email today, I just got a post from DHSMV, they're down again. So that's, you know, people take a day off, they come into the office because they've got a date, they've got a date out there that's coming closer, and sometimes the DHSMV connections are not great. They are working on it, they have been working on it since I've become tax collector, so I'm not sure what that means timeframe-wise. But we do apologize to the citizens because I know this is an inconvenience, and we have no idea, it could be up in five minutes, or it could be down for two hours. So again, we deeply apologize for how that impacts people's lives. But I want to share something else that's going on, and in our office, often, we deal with technical issues. And one of them is the concealed weapons permit. So we get calls all the time, not understanding what needs to be done, if they want to carry a permit, how do they do it? So that's one of the topics we decided we're gonna start, maybe three times a year, doing Can We Talk Coffee and Conversations about. Our first one is tomorrow, from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m., excuse me. And the Sheriff's Office is going to be joining us. Sheriff, would you join me up here? Because this is a multi-pronged issue, all we do is stand, at this point, our office, your Tax Collector's Office, stands in the role of the Ag Department. We have a contract with the Ag Department to issue the permits, based on the law. But then many times, the brand-new carry person will say, well, what do I do now? Where can I put this? What does carry mean? What does cover mean? We actually don't know those answers. And so sometimes, we hesitate to somebody out saying, we don't know those answers. We give them a copy of the statute, very hard to read and understand that. So we felt like it was important to reach out and partner with the Sheriff's Office because they know that side of this equation. Excuse me, so I'm just delighted to have the opportunity to do this workshop for our citizens with the Sheriff's Office. I don't know if you wanted to make a comment on that?
Sure. Tomorrow's meeting, as Ms. Myers alluded to, is focused specifically on concealed weapons permits, and more specifically, the requirements that the law places on our citizens as far as the legalities of concealed weapons carry. So we want to invite all of our citizens to come and attend this meeting or workshop, if you will, if they have any questions, or if they already have a permit and have questions, or if they aspire to become a concealed weapons permit holder. And also want to take an opportunity to publicly recognize Mrs. Myers for her efforts that she has made in partnering with not only the Sheriff's Office, but with the Department of Agriculture. I can recall a time early in my career that whenever you applied for a concealed weapons permit, there was routinely a 90 to 120-day turnaround. Since she has made this partnership with the Department of Agriculture, we now see those concealed weapons permits returned from the time of application, generally within two weeks or less, unless there's some type of a problem. So certainly, she's to be extended a great deal of things from, not only from the Sheriff's Office, but also from the citizens of our county.
Thank you. So this is our first one. Our next one will be in May, and it's another area that is very complicated and has tremendous impact on citizens, and that's the tax certificate sale. So stay tuned, the next one will be in May, and it will deal with the purchasing of tax certificates, and what does that mean? It's not just for a purchaser, it's for the person who has the property, for them to understand the impact, the legal impacts of a lien. So with that, thank you for the opportunity to share with you this morning. We look forward to being part of this.
Now, we're gonna move to Cheryl. Ms. Cheryl Lynch, if you would come forward.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
You should have the fourth quarter slash annual report for 2017 in front of you. Wanted to point out a few things. I did a little bit of research because I do stay in tune with what's going on in our surrounding counties, and I pulled some information that was very interesting. If you look for 2017, we had about $2.5 million, a little over that, that was invested into Putnam County through loans and capital investment from businesses. So I wanted to see what our other counties were doing. We came in second behind Nassau County, we were only behind for about $400,000. So on a per capita basis, that's a huge, huge impact for Putnam County. I also looked at the business startups. I said, okay, well, we had seven last year. What happened in Clay County? They had eight. What happened in Nassau County? They had six. And what happened in St. John's County? They had seven. So we're putting numbers up that are right in line with what our regional partners are doing as well, and I think that says a lot to Putnam County and the folks here in Putnam County and the investment that they're making. I also wanted to highlight, we had three success stories last year. We administered $165,000 in bridge loans for Putnam County businesses for Hurricane Irma. And to date, we have about over $300,000 and growing for SBA property damage and economic injury loans that are going through right now. There's a little bit more information on the second sheet. We do have a Putnam business owner, quote, that received help for the bridge loan, and they were able to stay in business because of the bridge loan, and in turn, have applied for an SBA loan and got approved for that as well. So according to Alice Cooper, she said, now I can sleep at night. So that's a good thing. Also wanted to highlight that the Teen Entrepreneur Summit that we did last year, we're gonna roll out to all the high schools this year in 2018, towards latter part of the year. And we, the SBA came to us and said, hey, we have some extra money. Very rare occurrence, and they put a call for request for projects. So I put in a request to establish an agricultural export marketing program. It got approved, it was a statewide program. UNF was able to participate up to two plans, and one of those recipients was a Putnam County farmer. So I wanted to make sure of that. The program did get extended because we spent our money frugally, it's just a bad habit that I have. We have until June of this year, we've got four more plans that we can do. Because we reached our quota out of UNF, we have to sit on the sidelines till March 30th. But if the other regions don't participate, I probably have about four more Putnam farmers lined up to grab the rest of those, so, little competition, never hurt anybody. Also wanted to give you an idea of what else I'm working on. Some of you may be aware or not, but for a few years now, in partnership with David Dinkins, with the Institute of Food and Agricultural Sciences, IFIS, out of UF, we've been working on establishing a food innovation center down at the State Farmers Market. We're getting a lot closer, we've gotten to a point, we've got Chef Burl that has found a contact with Electrolux where we may get some donated equipment, some we would have to pay for. We've identified two tenants that can move in, both of which are veterans. One is a juice processor and the other one is a produce distributor. And we have identified a contractor that has been working with us to do planning of the building. We're trying to put in a USDA and an FDA-approved kitchen, along with a couple processing lines, to help create jobs in this county. We'll keep you posted as to the status of that. We're gonna look to EDA funds to get, I think the maximum is $800,000. This Friday, I've been invited to join the USDA meeting that's gonna be happening here to speak about the Food Innovation Center, to get USDA on board as well. Couple other programs that we have rolled out, we started a pilot program of creating your own workforce here in Putnam County. The, a lot of the small business owners have complained that they can't find workers. So we've teamed up with Palatka High School. We had an information session where about 55 juniors came to the meeting, and Commissioner Harvey attended that meeting, where the business owners spoke to the students who may not want to go to college. Maybe they want to go on a technical path, maybe they just want to go into the workforce right out of college, right out of high school, for whatever reason. All the business owners that talked to them didn't go to college, so kinda gave them an idea of what's available and what's possible. So what we're doing is, the juniors that are interested, they're taking an assessment test to find out where their likes are, where their interests are, and where their capabilities are, and we're gonna link them up with a small business owner, where when they graduate from their junior year, they'll have a job during the summer, come the fall, they'll go to school in the morning, they'll be early released to work in the afternoon, and then once they graduate, they'll be trained up for a job to go into once they graduate. So that's a pilot program, and we do plan to roll that out to the Interlockin High School and Crescent City Junior/Senior High as well. Been working very closely with Congressman Yoho's office on the farm bill, and I'll let my state director talk more because that's a little bit above my pay grade. And I also sit on a bunch of other advisory boards, and I'm also working with Congressman Yoho's office on the Five Pillar Project. So participating behind the scenes a lot. The other last thing that I wanted to kinda give you a heads-up, I always pay attention to the economic trends of what's going on. And to give you an idea of these numbers that you see, in times of high unemployment, you see a lot of business starts. That has now shifted, we've got low unemployment, so the business starts won't be as many, but the businesses that do start will most likely be solid, financially capable, financially-backed businesses that'll be strong. I'm working with at least half a dozen businesses either outside this county or outside the state to come in to Putnam County. So you're growing, whether you like it or not, it's happening. And I think it's a great opportunity for Putnam County to kinda pull up its bootstraps and keep supporting the business community, and I thank you all for your continued support of the SBDC.
Thank you, Sharon.
And I think it's a great opportunity for Putnam County to kind of pull up its bootstraps and keep supporting the business community. And I thank you all for your continued support of the SBDC.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Morning, Chairman, Commissioners, City Administrator and others. It's an honor to be here, after spending last week in Washington, DC, meeting with our Florida delegation and many other congressional leaders. It's nice to be back home with elected officials who actually get it. So I just wanted to, you know, be this bodyguard for Cheryl today, to come in front of you and thank you and congratulate you for recognizing the importance of developing your own, that is, working with your small businesses to create the jobs which Putnam County needs as it continues, or the Florida economy and the county continues to grow. You're a partner in what we call the Partners of Prosperity. The Florida Small Business Development Center Network is actually part of a national organization. As Cheryl said, we're actually SBA's largest entrepreneurial development program. Nationwide, there's an SBDC network in every state in U.S. territory. There are 62 of us around the country. Florida is actually the largest SBDC network in the country, with nearly 250 employees and 45 offices statewide. We are the state's principal provider for small business development assistance. We're the state's Small Business Development Agency. So we work hand-in-hand with Career Source Florida, which I am a board member of, and Enterprise Florida, which I serve on their executive committees. So we work in hand-in-hand as business development partners to ensure that Florida has all of the resources it needs to create, expand, and grow the companies in which we have. I won't platform too much about the importance that small businesses mean to the state of Florida, but I will tell you that Florida has about 2.4 million small businesses. That is almost equal to Texas, a state that's about 25% larger than us. Our economy is, half of our economy is supported by small businesses. And so as Putnam County looks to take its investment, leverage it with what it is that we bring to the table with the federal, state, and other local resources, I think it'll be instrumental to continue what Putnam County needs in ways of supporting your local economy. I also want to just touch briefly on some of the other national initiatives. As we are the U.S. Small Business Administration's principal partner in entrepreneurial development, business development across the country and within Florida, we are also working on other national initiatives. So while I was in DC last week, we were talking to partners at the Department of Homeland Security, for example. Given our infrastructure nationwide, small businesses, small and medium-sized businesses are facing risk with respect to cybersecurity and cybersecurity attacks. And utilizing the National Small Business Development Center Network, we can educate our small and medium-sized enterprises to assure that they understand and are educated about what their risks are and protect themselves. But one of the other initiatives that we're working on is with Congressman Yoho and our other members of Congress who serve on the Ag Committee. And that is the farm bill's reauthorization. Looking at opportunities, because the SBDC program is as much a rural development program as it is a small business development program. We exist across the state in all 67 counties, and we recognize the role in which we play in rural communities like Putnam. And therefore, there's opportunities within the farm bill to fund the things, to expand the things in which we do to support small business creation and growth. And so we're going to be looking at that. And Cheryl undermines her expertise in this particular area, because she is actually my advisor with respect to what we need to do at a national level. And she will be serving on a national committee that's ultimately going to make recommendations to America's SBDC, which I am the board chairman, about what we need to do with respect to the farm bill. So my challenge to you is, as you look to support or continue to support your SBDC, look at ways in which you can increase that support. Because as I continue to work DC and Tallahassee to bring more of those resources that we need, local communities need, counties like Putnam County needs, we're going to need that local investment to leverage that. So continue, I would challenge you to continue to look for that local investment so I can bring more resources to Putnam County. And I stand here to answer any questions that you may have, Commissioners.
Any questions?
I have none. Thank you.
Fantastic. Well, I'm always available to you. Cheryl has my contact information. Please don't hesitate to reach out to me with any concerns, because I am essentially your talking head with respect to small businesses, both in Tallahassee and Washington, DC.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Downs? Would you like to take this opportunity for this proclamation?
Absolutely. This is Sunshine Week, and it's very important to us at the clerk's office that we relay this back and forth. And I have a proclamation to read. Whereas James Madison, the father of our federal constitution, wrote that "The consent of the governed required that the people be able to arm themselves with the power which knowledge gives; and whereas every citizen in our particular democracy has an inherent right to access government meetings and public records; and whereas an open and accessible government is vital to the establishing and maintaining the people's trust and confidence in their government and in the government's ability to effectively serve its citizens; and whereas the protection of every person's right of access to public records and government meetings is high priority for the Putnam County Clerk of Court; and whereas the Putnam County Clerk of Court is committed to openness and transparency in all aspects of the operation seeking to set a standard in this regard. And now, therefore, the Putnam County Clerk of Court commits during Sunshine Week and throughout the year to work diligently to enhance the public access to government records and information, to increase information provided electronically and online to ensure that all meetings and deliberative bodies under the jurisdictions and their committees are fully noticed and open to the public. Done, ordered, and adopted this 27th day of February 2018."
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move approval of Sunshine Week Open Government Proclamation.
We have a proper approval?
A second.
And a proper second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those not in favor, same sign. So moves.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to comment that Ms. Smith, sorry, he could not be here today. He's at a conference down the state. But it is extremely important to our office, and we work very diligently to make sure that our records are open to the public. And it's probably one of the highest things in our office that we're committed to. And you know, not only are we committed to it, but it's our job. And we want to do it and do it well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to a public comment. I just wanted to make a statement. We will be having a public hearing later, later this afternoon, I mean, later this morning. And I noticed that I have two cards here by the locks. Do you want to wait until that public hearing? Or would you like to speak now? Now, if you speak now, that means you're not going to be able to, I mean, I would recommend that you speak at the hearing. But if you'd like to speak now, you are more than welcome. It should be pretty quick, it'd be after the consent agenda. Okay. All right. And public comment is now open. We like to keep it down to three minutes. You don't have to have a card. The card helps. But we do ask that you come up, you speak your name and your address. Right now, I have Ms. Stephanie Foster.
My name is Stephanie Foster, and I live at 735 NFR 75G. We're, I'm representing the Fort Gates community. And we are in the far southern part of Putnam County. You're probably all aware, probably all too aware, of some of the issues that we faced with National Forest Road 29 and National Forest Road 62, as far as the pave, not pave, all that kind of stuff. But that's not the issue that I'm coming to you today in hopes that you can help us with, is just basically the maintenance of the road. It's been turned over to the Forest Service, as you're aware, since November. But now, after 50 years of receiving delivery of mail from the Postal Service, apparently, there's a little too much rain, sleet, and snow, because they'll no longer deliver our mail. And that doesn't seem like a big deal, but what it really points to is all the other ancillary issues that can come up as a result of that. If we don't get mail, what else don't we receive? Emergency services is the first thing that comes to my mind. And I'm not going to brag, but I'm one of the youngest people out in our neighborhood. And it's very concerning to me. We've had two emergencies in the last six months. One of them, they couldn't find us. That's concerning, that's another issue. But number, the second one was, they couldn't get to us. We had one of our residents, after the big rainstorm on the night of Sunday, January 28th, we had a medical emergency. And due to the water, we've got, at the end of 29, there is now such a buildup of water, we call it Lake 29. And they couldn't get the ambulance through, so they had to have a truck go in and get her, and then go out to the road to have her meet the ambulance. That scares me. That's just, you know, that's, anyway, I'm not going to, anyway. So that is, that's a big concern to me. And I'm not an attorney. Sometimes I try to pretend like I'm one. But it seems like that's a potential liability, not only for the Forest Service for not properly maintaining the road, since they've taken it over in November, but also for the county, due to the precedence that's been set of you maintaining the road all these years, and then all of a sudden, now not doing so. Now, I know your hands are tied legally and that you can't, you're not supposed to maintain the road. You were never supposed to. But the fact of the matter is, you did, and now you're not. So that's concerning to me. The other issue is, well, so after, we met with Commissioner Goddard. He kindly came out and met with our neighborhood, and we talked about our concerns. And after the meeting, I went, I'd been speaking with a constituent advocate at Yoho's office. And he said, and I told him about the meeting. And he said, "Well, so who's driving this bus?" And I said, "Well, I'm not really sure." And he said, "Well, is the county going to help you? Are they helping you?" And I said, "Well, the message I got was that the county's not able to help us because of the liability of always maintaining and now not able to." And he said, "Well, the county needs to help you. The county needs to stand with you and step up and band with you to the Forest Service to write a letter, signed by all the commissioners, stating that these citizens need to be protected. These citizens deserve right to emergency services. These citizens, I mean, the mail, that's, you know, it'd be nice, but we need to be safe. We need to be secure." So I'm here today asking you to write a letter to the Forest Service on behalf of the residents of the Fort Gates community, compelling them to properly maintain the road. The Postal Service has asked for it to be in writing to, for the Forest Service to put in writing that they will continue to properly maintain the road in order for us to receive mail. Otherwise, we're going to have a 14-mile round trip to Salt Springs to get our mail. Now, I guess the big question you might be thinking is, "Well, why do you guys think you're so special? You know, there's hundreds of miles of National Forest Service roads out there. Why are you different?" And the first thing I would say is, number one, we've got the ferry crossing. We've got all these people coming and going. Now, I know you're still in limbo as far as figuring out how that's all going to work, and if you're going to have the monies to be able to repair the ferry properly. But the fact of the matter is, it's been historically advocated as a ferry crossing for years and years. And I can't tell you the number of city slickers I've seen come out, no offense, come out, and they're like, "Oh, my cell won't work." And I can't, I mean, and it's concerning to me when one of those folks might take, follow their GPS and go down to Deliverance, down 66, and end up getting stuck. I mean, that's happened a lot. I've actually seen it. So that's the first reason. The second reason is, we're part of the Black Bear Scenic Highway. So we've been advocated as part of a little tourist trap out where we are. And the third reason is the precedence that's been set by the county. So I'm asking you, I'm pleading, I'm hoping that you can all write a letter to the Forest Service and that we can work together. The biggest thing is, is there's laws, I know there's laws. But if there's some way we can work together to get an exception to this, so that we can do the right thing for the citizens of Putnam County and take care of this road so that everyone can enjoy it.
You're welcome. Is there any comments?
Yeah, plenty.
I have plenty. May I go first?
Yes, you can.
Thank you for coming. And what we learned during the audit period that we weren't allowed to be on roads that we did not own. And the new forest ranger, Mr. Bauer, has taken a pretty hard step in your area on some issues. We were going to try to pave that road going down to the ferry, but it was just a little piece of money. And the state of Florida partnered with us on something we didn't own. And, but I'm sorry you got misinformation, because Congressman Yoho's office, Cat Cammick, and Justin Norflath have been very, very active in getting additional funds for the Forest Service to have the ability to maintain those roads. So they're working on that, and they are taking the lead on this. They understand the problem. As you well know, the Forest Service could probably care less whether you live out there or not. We do care. We do care. And we want to do right by you. It's just a matter of, how do we do that? Now, I will tell you, this Commissioner's stance, if the Forest Service wants to partner back with Putnam County, we'd be glad to be back in the, well, I would be glad to be back in the road business. But only if they provide funds for us to do that, too. Because we cannot maintain all those roads like we were doing out there. So there's a balance here. And I think you're going to see from Congressman Yoho, he's very engaged. He's been engaged for a long time, even before he was our regular congressman about this issue. And you're going to see some results coming out of his department.
Okay. So as far as a letter is concerned, is that something that you're willing to do? Or do you, have you?
Well, I don't know, we've done a letter, but we've already voiced our opinion publicly. But a letter would be probably, I'm sure our administrator can pull that together.
That would be great. I mean, I know that doesn't sound like a lot, but if you could do that, just to show your support, we're going to continue to work with the Forest Service and Yoho's office to get this done.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity. You're welcome. Commissioner Libley?
Yes. Commissioner Harvey explained it well. I just would add that the jurisdictional boundaries of the Forest Service in Putnam County could have an interlocal agreement that Putnam County took care of some forest roads, primarily where our Putnam County residents live. And that's precisely where we are now. He's at the congressional level, looking for funding that would allow that to happen. And he could contract with anybody, private, Putnam County, or whoever's doing, that's what Marion County has in the forest region. So we're working on that. And we'd be happy to do it, but we have to have funding to be able to do it. We can't use taxpayer monies in Putnam County on roads we don't own.
Right.
So we're not ignoring it. We're just not able to do it.
Yeah. I'd want to, do you have any questions? Any questions? I wanted to bring up the ferry landing. And I spoke to you down there, that I was actually stunned that after the hurricane and the damage that was done there, I received no phone calls. And I'm not sure if any of the other Commissioners received any, but I honestly received no phone calls about that ferry not running, which I thought was strange. I myself used that ferry. Mr. Press, if you would come up, is there anything else that you can tell us about what's going on with the ferry landing? I think I explained to you before that we've ran into a few problems there.
Mr. Chairman, I
Yes, sir.
I feel like this is not the proper venue for this. I think that we have workedshopped it, we're going to workshop it more. We spent three hours on it last Tuesday afternoon.
Yes, sir, we did.
-or whenever it was, so-
And I've spent, I've spent-
You know, I, you know, I think that she could get her information from you being her commissioner on this, on this, that all this was already discussed last week and it's going to be discussed again in the not-too-distant future at a workshop when the administrator, um, when it sets it up. I think that the proper venue would be to, for the administrator to get her contact information and let her know when this workshop's going to be, and then she can be present when it's discussed and get the information firsthand.
Yes, sir, yes. I, I went through this and I see that the whole, uh, neighborhood has showed up here and that's why I was going ahead and opened this. If you could briefly just explain what's, what we are doing and then we will get back with you on the, uh, a time and a place.
Yes, sir. Um, the mainland side landing came in well over budget. We're looking at some value engineering on that, see if there's something that the DOT would let us do, uh, rather than concrete piling, maybe some timber piling, we're investigating that now. And the, uh, the far side landing is under, uh, design preliminary engineering now. So, that's, that's about where we stand with it. We're doing everything we can do, uh, within the time constraints, within what we have to do with our DOT grants for that work.
Yes, sir. Thank you, thank you very much. All right.
Mr. Chairman, before we move on from this item, uh, just, uh, first of all, I wanna thank Ms., uh, Ms. Foster for her presentation. I thought it was very much on point-
Yes.
And, and, and thank you so much for the detail that you brought to us this morning. Uh, just wanna, just for consensus purpose, uh, it's the consensus of the commission for the county administrator to draft a letter of support, uh, for the forestry roads for, and, uh, for the signatures of the Board of County Commissioners. Is that what I'm hearing here this morning?
Yes.
I concur.
All right. Thank you, folks. Duly noted. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any, uh, other public comment?
One more thing?
Please come up to the microphone, give your name and your address.
It's a simple question.
He needs us to give us-
Your, your, your name and your address, please.
My name is Bruce Haynes. I live at seven sixty-four, Road seventy-five G, Salt Springs. I got one question to everybody. And my dad used to say this a lot, he was a Tennessee farm boy that made his way up, but anytime there was a questionable situation, he would say, "I wonder what the liability is." And I'm asking you, what is your liability to us?
Thank you. Is there any other, uh, public comment? Seeing none, we'll close this portion and we'll move to the consent agenda. Gentlemen?
I have one. Um, Item C is a resolution in support for the Campaign of America's Energy. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I brought this forward and asked for it to be put, placed on the agenda and I wish I wouldn't have. I wanna pull it today. It's in direct conflict to a resolution that we passed, uh, not supporting fracking and drilling offshore in the state of Florida. And this is kinda, uh, it was a disguised campaign. As I researched it before we got to this meeting today, it is absolutely against what this board has set in policy before. So, with your approval, I'd just like to pull the thing completely. And I encourage each of you, if you wanna look at it further, but that's a ba- the roots are exactly that.
Mr. Libley, I appreciate that, 'cause I've done the research too and contacted Representative Payne who, who said, "Be very careful going into this arena." And you're, you're right. Once you start digging down to the shell corporations underneath there-
It is.
-it's not as pretty as it imagines it to be.
It really isn't. It doesn't discuss anything with alternative energy that we're doing with solar and wind in the state. And there's just so many other, uh, facets to this subject that's not discussed here. And I, you know, I'll say it, I think I was a little tricked into bringing it here, so, anyhow.
That happens.
With that being said, I would like to pull it, sir.
Yes, sir. Mr. Pickens, any comment?
No.
Mr. Turner?
I have none.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to talk about Item E for just a quick second, that's all.
Okay.
Okay, so we're gonna pull Item C, is that correct?
Yes, I was just gonna make sure, Mr. Manning, that that's-
Yeah, yeah, that, that's fine. Everybody's in support of pulling it off the, off the agenda. Um, well, you could certainly do it as a motion, I guess it would be cleaner for the record.
If we don't need a motion, then let's, uh, let's do it that way.
Chairman, I make a motion that we honor Commissioner Libley's request and pull Item C off the consent agenda.
Okay, we have proper motion?
I'll second.
A proper second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion is pulled.
Mr. Chairman, Item E on the consent agenda, I just have one, one quick question I did not get time to ask yesterday. This is to Ms. Papel. This is a repair to, uh, the communication towers, uh, Huntington, not hunting. Can we do a loan to that, um, so when that fund does become profitable, that we can get our general fund money back out? Or is it, does it matter how it goes in? I know on some of our enterprise funds, we prove that, um, we have to prove basically what we put in there so we can get it, what, out of there. But is this the same type of scenario?
It's not. This is a special revenue fund and the debt, I, I think in the narrative, I, we may have included the fact that, that we, we may or may not have, but the debt that expires in 2020 in that fund, the income isn't sufficient to serve the debt. And the towers, of course, we're working on-
Right.
-renovating them anyway and through the BPP, but it just, it just really doesn't matter.
I, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for your explanation. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have, sir. If you're ready for a motion, I, I move the consent agenda A through N with the exception of C being already dismissed.
Okay, we have a proper motion?
I'll second that.
A proper second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. All those not in favor, same sign. Then the consent agenda moves minus C. All right. Now, we will, is there anything that, uh, no, sorry.
Thank you very much.
You were just happening to know that. Ms. Shirley Griffin, if you would, uh, entertain us here for a few minutes?
It can get long.
Yeah. Well, it's not long. I usually do this.
Good morning, Commissioners and everyone in the audience and all of our other dignitaries. Uh, I'm here to report for the Better Place Plan and so I will read this off and see what you think. The annual report of the Better Place Plan Oversight Committee to the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners. This is for the fiscal year ending September thirty, 2017, and it is submitted by me. The Better Place Plan was established by the Board of County Commissioners in two thousand and two in accordance with Section two twelve point zero five five Florida statutes to finance, plan, and construct infrastructure, which is defined as a capital expenditure associated with the construction, reconstruction, or improvement of public facilities that have a life expectancy of five or more years. And is provided in County Ordinance two thousand and two dash thirty-three with the purpose of relieving existing deficiencies in infrastructure for the benefit of the existing, existing residents. For these purposes, a plan provided for a countywide one percent SIR tax, shared with the five municipalities, to be collected for the fifteen-year calendar beginning January one, two thousand and three, and ending December thirty-one, two thousand and seventeen. On April seven, two thousand and fifteen, the county's voters extended this plan to December thirty-first, twenty thirty-two. The Better Place Plan Oversight Committee was established at the same time by the Board of County Commissioners to provide oversight. That includes reviewing expenditures of the SIR tax funds to ensure that they have been spent in accordance with the county ordinance under the plan, which was established, and to present to the board an annual report on the implementation, impul- implementation, forgive it, of progress status. SIR tax funds have been spent in accordance with the letter of the law and set forth in the ordinance. We have conducted such a review and we believe it is, uh, to the letter of the law. The Oversight Committee is not expected, nor is it qualified, to conduct an actual audit of the program. The Better Place Plan's reviews and expenditures are audited by the county's external auditor during the county's annual audit. Whether the expenditures meets the spirit of the law, i.e. the, the intent of the authors and the voters, is a determination that only the Board of County Commissioners is qualified to make. The Board implicitly and explicitly makes these decisions when it approves a project during the year. No issues regarding the Better Place Plan were raised during the recent state audit. Better Place Plan tables regarding the funding and status of Better Place projects are listed below and are attached. The data is courtesy of Stacy Papel and Press Thompson. These tables do not include the SIR tax funds received by the five municipalities, which is approximately seventeen percent of the total, leaving eighty-three percent for county projects. Better Place projects undertaken by the municipalities also are not included. In addition to the long list of infrastructure funded over the years by the Better Place Plan, the plan has resulted in eighty-five point seven miles of roads being resurfaced and ninety-seven point three miles of dirt roads being paved, excluding the municipalities. There are three tables on the back that explain from day one to day, the current. If you have any questions, I won't take 'em, but Stacy and Press will.
Mr. Chairman, if I could-
Yes, sir.
I just wanna thank-
So, do we have any questions?
Mrs. Griffin for-
Some of you promised you wouldn't ask me anything.
I won't. Y'all did a good job and it's very accurate, your report.
We're just an oversight committee.
I wanna personally thank you for serving in this capacity. I really do and all that you and your husband both. And, uh, my second question is, don't we have a breakfast this Saturday and what are we serving?
Yes, we are. Yes, we are. Everyone's invited from eight-thirty to, to about ten-thirty in Pomona Park at the community center. It's really improving. We have put our money back into the town and, uh, we have really updated some things in there and even around town. So, come down and enjoy us, all of you.
First Saturday or-
Audience included.
-Saturday of every month, isn't it?
First Saturday of each month.
And it is, it's very delightful.
It's the beautification committee in the town and we're about thirteen women that decided to start cleaning up some. So, we took our mops and brooms and went to town.
Well, your volunteering is very appreciative and, um, we thank you for what you and your husband do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Shirley. Mr. Downs, this is your moment, if you had anything.
Uh, no, sir. Uh, Tim Smith is out of town, as I said earlier, at a meeting and a conference and, um, uh, we're fine.
Okay. All right, then at this time, we'll go to code enforcement. And we have, uh, starting with a fine reduction, case number two zero one five dash zero zero six seven five.
Chairman, and if it will please the board, um, Ms. Suarez is out today. I'm taking her place. My name is Sarah Brennan, I work for, excuse me, Planning and Development. Case before you, as mentioned, two zero one five dash zero zero six seven fine is a fine reduction for one four nine Lake Como Drive in Pomona Park. The owner, Mr. Tony Vestal, is the current property owner and he's requested a fine reduction on the property located at the address listed here. Uh, the property was in violation of three Putnam County ordinances. Uh, number one was standard housing code, section three oh nine one. Uh, description is an unsafe structure, uh, burn structure, mobile home, as you can see uh, from the visual display. Number two, Putnam County ordinance, standard housing code, section three oh seven four, care of premises, trash and debris, as you can see, uh, in the picture before you. And number three, Putnam County ordinance, land development code, section twelve oh two, uh, permits required, unpermitted demolition. Here is a picture of the after. Uh, staff recommends that the current fines of thou- seven thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars and fifty cents be reduced to one thousand one hundred and nine dollars, which represents the hard cost to the county. The daily fine ran on the property from March second, two thousand and seventeen due to December twenty-ninth, two thousand and seventeen. The property owner corrected, uh, these issues in seventeen months. The property owners have been sent nine certified letters and one first-class letter. The site and the complex have been posted four times. Orders were recorded in the public record. Certified was, mail was returned to staff, uh, undeliverable as addressed, unable to forward. Uh, the last letter was signed as received by Mr. Vestal. Any questions for staff?
Was there ownership change, excuse me, Chairman, if I can go?
Uh, as far as the record, I can't tell. Um, I believe Mr. Vestal has been the owner since the, uh, letters went out in, in March second or the fine started.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Vestal, if you would give your name and your address?
Tony Vestal, four fourteen River Street, Palaca.
Okay. And, uh, did you have any comments?
Yes, uh, I, um, have several. I went to the code enforcement office and asked for-
Get closer to that mic, please.
And asked for, uh, the letters that has been sent, certified letters. And only one has been sent to my residence where I, where I live. Others has been sent to previous addresses that I've been away from for at least ten years or longer. But the notification that I did get to my home and received, I responded immediately. I came in, uh, spoke with the, the board and they gave me two months to get the stuff cleaned up and I had it cleaned up within two weeks. Prior to that, the notice I had at my residence, four fourteen River Street, uh, that was, that's the only notice that I, I received. And I have a piece of paper here from the post office where two thousand and fourteen, when I had my, uh, address was changed to four, to, to a different post office box here in Palaca. So, I've never served any papers until, um, till I, till I, uh, the end of last year when I appeared to, in front of your board here.
Okay. Were you not aware of when this damage occurred?
Yes, and I went and got a permit and, and taking care of, uh, the, the issue. That I left, uh, a frame to the mobile home. My sister's grandbaby burnt the place down playing with matches in bed. And when I, uh, took care of demoing the place, I got a permit, demoed the place, I left some recyclable stuff, like the frame, so it could be recycled. And that was the only thing left from the, uh, from the mobile home. I had police reports where, and reported where people has gone out there and dumped stuff, debris, and I, I cleaned that up as well. Even stuff that was not even on my property, that was attached to my property, I cleaned that up as well, within the timeframe that, uh, they have given me. But, like I said, I was never notified of any of this here, uh, the, until the end of last year and, like I said, I complied when I did get notice.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioners?
So, you weren't notified until the end of two thousand and seventeen? Is that what you're saying?
Correct. And I came to the hearing when I was notified and they gave me two months to get it taken care of. I had it taken care of within two weeks.
Okay, so you went before the special magistrate, is that-
Yes.
-what it was?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I, I, I'm glad it's all cleaned up, but I do have some concerns of how you didn't know and how the mail got to you. And looking at this, it looks like our department really tried to do the best they could to contact you. For whatever reason, it didn't happen, but I wanna thank you publicly for cleaning it up. Our, our bottom line here is compliance and that's what we wanna see. That's all I've got to say, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Turner?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, in most cases, I, uh, I'm a firm believer that we should try to recoup our investment that we have in cleaning these places up. And, uh, but in this particular case, I think maybe even further reduction is in order. And the reason that I'm saying that is if, if the, if as soon as he was notified, he tried to come forward and do his best to comply but wasn't notified before, then I don't know that, I don't know that the fine, he, some of the cost involved in no, in not notifying him, even though they did their very best. I know how difficult it is for the department and staff to find him sometimes and so I'm, I'm certainly not saying anything or getting down on the department at all. But in this particular case, I don't think the man knew that he, that this was going on and when he did, he jumped into action and tried to do the best he could here to clean it up. So, you know, I, personally, I think I would be in favor of either an a fur- a further reduction than what the staff is asking for. That's just my opinion.
Okay. Any comments?
Um, I agree with Mr. Turner and, uh, if you have a suggestion, sir, I welcome it.
Okay.
In the form of a motion.
Well, the inspections and the postings were four hundred and forty dollars. That was before the, that they tried to contact him. So, what I would suggest, if you add that and the, uh, the, uh, the money for the hearing officer itself, that comes up to about four hundred and eighty dollars. So, I think my suggestion would be the four hundred and eighty dollars, unless you wanted to maybe put the administrative fee on top, 'cause that had nothing to do with when he was, with when he was done. So, maybe five hundred and eighty dollars instead of eleven hundred and nine would be my suggestion and I so move that, Mr. Chairman.
And I second it.
Is there a time period for payment on that?
Oh, yes. Can you pay this within thirty days?
I can pay it today.
Okay. Yes, sir, within thirty days is fine, but, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen.
So, we have, did you have another comment?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay. We have a proper motion and a proper second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, so moves and you get with the clerk of courts. So moves, and you get with the clerk of courts.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're now going to move to our public hearings.
Mr. Chairman, can we get a short recess?
Yes, we can. We can take a short recess. We're going to have a five-minute recess, and we'll be back.
All right.
We'll now reconvene our meeting. We're going to go to our resolution approving issuance of the bonds. Mr. Castleberry?
Mr. Castleberry, would you like to, Mr. Manning?
I'll go ahead and open that up, Mr. Chairman. This is a, this is a public hearing. It's a TFRH hearing required by the IRS as a condition of the issuance of tax-exempt bonds by the Development Authority. It will issue up to sixty million dollars in tax-exempt bonds. Neither the county nor the Development Authority will incur any liability regarding the bonds. IRS rules and Florida statutes require a TFRH public hearing and approval by the BLCC, even though the Development Authority will be issuing the bonds. Again, this is a public hearing, and Mr. Castleberry is the attorney for the Development Authority, and he will go ahead and present this matter on their behalf.
Mr. Chairman? I think we should ask him to go back on and put something on other than the FSU.
I thought I had a button where it covered it.
Do we have a second to that?
I'll second it.
Good morning, Commissioners. Russ Castleberry, counsel for the Putnam County Development Authority. Mr. Manning gave you a brief overview. These, this is, the company is, we know it as Lafarge. Lafarge was acquired some time ago by Continental. It's called Continental Palaca LLC, but it's the business next door to Seminole that takes their byproduct and makes good, good stuff out of it. The Development Authority is, people don't know a whole lot about it. I've been representing them for like twenty years or so. They were created by Special Acts of Legislature in nineteen sixty-one. Their primary purpose is to promote economic development and growth. Their primary tool is the ability to issue tax-exempt bonds on behalf of businesses. In this, as Mr. Manning said, probably if you don't hear anything else here, the fact that neither the county nor the Development Authority incurs any financial obligations under these bonds, they're issued on behalf of Continental, who is solely responsible for their repayment. In my, it's kind of a rare deal, although we have several pending right now in my twenty or so years. This will be the second one we've done. The other one we did back in two thousand seven for Seminole Electric, and that simply refinanced a bond issue that the Development Authority did for Seminole back in nineteen eighty-four. So there hadn't been a lot of activity. Hopefully, with the economy picking up, maybe we'll see some more of them. Development Authority, Mr. Tim Smith is the chairman, and three members of this board are on the Development Authority. You have three mayors, Palaca, Interlaken, and Crescent City, I think, and two city commissioners, nine total. The Development Authority, back in December, adopted a resolution, called an inducement resolution, which basically says the Development Authority is interested and willing to issue these bonds, assuming certain conditions are met. Probably the key condition is the holding of this public hearing and the approval by the Board of County Commissioners. The purpose of the public hearing is to advise this board and the public of the project that's going on, get public input, and then ultimately, hopefully, get the board to approve it. Even though they're issued, the bonds are issued by the Development Authority, that still requires Board of County Commissioner approval as the ultimate governing body in the county. There is a description of the project in your packet. I could read it to you. It doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. We do have representatives of Continental here if you have any specific questions, but it's good news. It represents investment in the community, capital investment in their facility there. And their interest is, obviously, if they can issue tax-free bonds, meaning the interest is non-taxable to the bondholder, the bondholder will then accept a lower interest rate than they would, Continental would otherwise have to pay, so it benefits them through lower interest rates, benefits the county as a whole by economic growth, and the bondholders are happy because they're, they're getting income that's tax-free. That's really all I had. Again, no financial responsibility on the bonds by either the county or the Development Authority. We do have representatives of Continental here if you have any specific questions about the project. The, the offering is up to sixteen million. We anticipate it being in that neighborhood. It cannot go over that. This will, this will be, if this proceeds, this will really be the last involvement of the county commission. Once it approves it, we go through with the closing process. Staff, Mr. Manning's office will probably have to get us a certified copy of the minutes today, a certified copy of the resolution, but probably unless something unusual happens, it will not be back before this board. And it will be strictly ministerial activities of the staff in trying to help us get it closed. So that's my spiel. Mr. Smith, as I said, is chairman of Development Authority. He was hoping to be here today, but he had a conflict, but he wanted me, obviously, the Development Authority unanimously approved it, and he wanted me to convey his support for this project.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Mr. Castleberry, there last at our Development Authority meeting, which I do serve on, and thank you for serving as our counsel. The, we do make a little money on these bonds. Would you kind of explain that a little to the Development Authority?
The Development Authority has a fee, a fee schedule based on the amount, the principal amount of the bonds, in this case sixteen million. The fee, and it's a sliding scale, obviously. The fee schedule was adopted probably ten or twelve years ago. I think that, I haven't calculated exactly, I think the Development Authority fee that it will receive will be in the neighborhood of eighteen to twenty thousand dollars. That money goes straight to the Development Authority. Continental, on whose behalf the bonds are being issued, pays all the expenses, so it is a net positive income stream to the Development Authority. They're not responsible for any professional fees, accountant's fees, attorney's fees, whatever it takes. Continental pays all of that.
And we can use that money in other economic development arenas throughout Putnam County.
That's correct.
And that's a wonderful thing. And my understanding is, and you might not want to be able to hint, but this is only a small part of what Lafarge or Continental is trying to do out there. They're not bonding all their improvements, from what I understood.
Well, that was what I thought I heard at the Development Authority of talking to Mr. Culver. He may want, he's here, he can tell, he can address that a little better than I. It sounds to me like it is the bulk of it, but I thought I had a different understanding, but...
That's fine.
Maybe I misheard.
That's fine. We're just happy for the investment in Putnam County, I will tell you. But you're more than welcome to come up and address it. If you don't mind, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to meet you. My name is Jim Culver. I'm the engineering manager at the Palaca Plant, and we are putting in a rail unloading facility at a cost of about ten million dollars. There may be another phase after that. Our initial intent is to design some additional feeders to be able to make it possible to feed the gypsum into the plant more efficiently. So that might be the other part of the investment that he was referring to. We have a mill improvement project to improve the quality of our stucco. That's about one point seven million dollars. And we have about two point five million dollars this year proposed for various smaller capital projects. And they're mixed between sustaining-type projects and improvement projects for both safety and quality.
Well, thank you very much for the investment you're making in Putnam County, and we look, I know that's for a long term, to keep you here, and we appreciate it very much, and our citizens do. So thank you.
Our privilege.
Mr. Chairman, I yield the floor, sir.
Mr. Lible?
Yes, I'd just like to thank you, Mr. Culver, I can, real quick. The diversity of your products that you're investing in, I was very worried when Seminole changed their fuel source, what would happen with your company, and you doubled down, is what you did. And you're going to be here for our citizens, and we thank you very much from our chamber and our county commission that you made that decision. Thank you.
We intend to be here for the long term.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Seeing no other comments, I'd like to offer a motion of approval of the issuance of bonds.
As this is a public hearing, we need to open it up to public comment? Sorry?
I was excited, Russ. I'm sorry.
Okay. Any other comments? And we'll move to public comments. Seeing none, we'll close public comments.
Now, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I can make a motion to approve the issuance of bonds by Putnam County Development Authority for up to sixteen million dollars.
I'll second it. We have a proper first, proper second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion moves.
Thank you very much.
Good to see Mr. Castleberry again, too, isn't it, huh?
We will now move to case on the PUD seventeen dash zero zero three Magnolia Dunes. And, go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Mr. Chairman and Commission, PUD seventeen zero zero, first off, Mike Brown, Putnam County Planning and Development Services. PUD seventeen zero zero three is an amendment to the existing Magnolia Dunes planned unit The applicant is Magnolia Dunes LLC, Mr. Charles Skeet Alfred Jr., representing that entity. And the request is an amendment or in a change to section two of the existing PUD document under the allowed uses and conditions. The request would increase, is to increase the camps, number of campsites by one hundred and twenty-five, increase the number of RV spaces with hookups by fourteen, add an additional area for designated camping, and then to allow ATV and UTV use to the mud pit outside of the restricted mud bogging hours only during the designated events. Now, I'll go into a little more depth on each one of these. Real quickly, a number of you have been involved over the years on, sitting on the board of this project and its various amendments. I'll quickly just glance over them. Back in oh eight, the county approved the original rezoning of ninety-two-plus acres to a PUD to allow a commercially operated mud bogging facility known as Hogwaller Mud Bogging. Within that ninety-two acres, seven point five acres was for an active mud bogging activities, a mud bogging pit. Eighty acres were approved for ATV riding. There was a subsequent amendment in oh nine where the county approved adding five hundred and forty-nine-plus acres, which also expanded the ATV riding area, allowed camping, and approved for a bathhouse facility. In two thousand fourteen, there was another amendment adding an additional three hundred and sixty-five acres and expanding the ATV riding area, added the use of... ATV riding area, added the use of airboat racing, designated an area for, and a number of 15 RV sites, these were RV sites with hookups, eight cottages, and 16 tent camping In 2016, there was another amendment, and in this amendment, there was a revision to the hours of operation for the mud bogging, airboat racing, and the ATV riding. I won't go into the specifics of those timeframes, but they are written on this presentation and in the staff report. That amendment also allowed camping all year round with a maximum of 125 campsites, 15 RV sites with hookups, and eight cabins. It limited ATV riding from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM throughout the year, increased the number of event days to 10 per month, and a total calendar days of designated events to 60. Events, the timeframe of events were defined as extending from 8:00 PM on Friday through 8:00 PM on Sunday, and it also altered some of the buffering requirements. This is, shows the future land use, which is agriculture, Ag 2 out there, surrounded by a lot of conservation with Ag 2 land uses to the east and to a portion of the west. The zoning is PUD. The proposed changes, as I indicated before, the request is to increase the number of campsites, that would increase by 125 over what's existing in the PUD, to bring the total allowed within the PUD to 250 campsites. The applicant is also requesting to increase the number of RV spaces with hookups by 14 to a total of 29. He also desires to designate an additional camping area, which is a little over four acres, just adjacent to and north of the present airboat racing area. And to clarify that ATVs and UTVs access to the mud pit would be allowed outside of the normal mud bogging hours. Today, the mud bogging is only allowed on Saturday and Sunday from, I believe it's 8, let's back here, from 9:30 to 5:30 during, and only during those weekends that are designated as an event. The request for the ATVs is to allow during those event weekends that mud, the ATVs and UTVs could access the mud bogging pit outside of those restricted hours for the trucks. And then, there is a condition and a commitment by the applicant that there's no conflict, there's no interaction. ATVs are not allowed in the mud pit when the trucks, the mud trucks are accessing it during the 8:30, the 8:30 to 5:30 timeframes. This shows you the area of the new camping proposed. It's a T up there, just north of the existing airboat racing area, and the area where the RV hookup site is, which is in designated area E on this map. This is a summary of the various areas and number of acres for each of the camping areas. The additional airport, airboat north side is 4.2 acres, which brings the total camping areas in acres to 30.8 for the site, for the PUD. One of the things, one of the primary things we look at in looking at amendments to PUDs is, and any PUDs, is consistency with the comp plan. Pursuant to Policy A193A10F of the future land use element, rural recreational uses are permitted in agriculture to land uses, subject to additional regulations that are found in the Land Development Code. Further, the rural recreational uses are defined in the comp plan as any commercial or non-commercial recreational activity, which by nature of either the customary operation of the use or the noise impacts of such, requires that the use be located on a large parcel of land and may be appropriately located outside the urban area. Further goes on to state that allowed uses shall include, but are not limited to, private nonprofit camps, racetracks, gun and archery ranges, off-road vehicle facilities, mud bogging, and motorcycle dirt tracks and courses. With that, staff believes that the proposed changes are consistent with the comprehensive plan. And just to add further, all the, there are no new uses being proposed in what the applicant is proposing to change. All these uses are already approved in the existing PUD. It's just increasing the number of campsites, RV hookup sites, and allowing, and adding that, the additional camping area, and allowing the access to the mud pit of ATVs and UTVs outside of the restricted mud bogging hours. The proposed amendment would increase the number of campsites and RV sites. The county has, as I stated, has previously approved these uses at this location through the adoption of the original Magnolia Dunes PUD and its subsequent amendments. The 4.2 acres located north of the airboat racing area is proposed for additional camping area, bringing the total to, as I stated earlier, 30.8 acres. There are no additional, there are no environmental constraints associated with this additional 4.2 acres of the campsite. The existing PUD limits the maximum of 25 campsites per acre. This is equivalent to roughly 1,740 square feet per site. This is in excess of what the minimum site, the size for campsites that the LDC requires. The LDC requires a minimum of 1,500 square feet per site. So the PUD requires a larger campsites. And the designated camp area is adequate to provide for the additional campsites, as well as the new total of 250 of the sites being requested. The applicant is, has submitted plans, is working with the Department of Health also to provide an additional bathhouse to support the addition to the campsites. Primary access to the site is County Road 310, which is a two-lane minor collector, which is, has an adopted level of service of D based on the 217 traffic counts from the County Traffic Count Program. County Road 310 is operating at acceptable level of service. Looking at the IT generation, trip generation rate for campground and RV parks, the changes themselves, just that increment of increase in campsites and RV sites would result in 57 new trips during the peak M-peak hour. This does not, these additional trips will not trip the adopted level of service for County Road 310. During designated events, the PUD does allow for ATV, UTV riding 24 hours a day over the 900 acres of the site where ATV and UTV riding is allowed. The applicant has requested allowing, outside again of those normal, the mud bogging restricted hours, the ATV, UTV access to the mud pit. Staff does not believe that this would add any additional impacts that are not already on the site, because you already have ATVs, UTV riding allowed over the entire rest of the site during that timeframe. Staff finds that the proposed changes to the Magnolia Dunes PUD are consistent with the future land use designation and the goals, objectives, and policies of the adopted comp plan. The proposed changes are uses that are already approved by the county for the Magnolia Dunes PUD. Staff recommends approval of the request to amend the Magnolia Dunes PUD to increase the number of campsites by 125, increase the RV sites with hookups by 14, add a new area for the campsites, and allow ATVs to utilize mud pit before and after the mud bogging hours during designated events. And do you have any questions of staff?
Not at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Not at this time, all right. So I guess at this time, we'll have, we have representative for Magnolia Dunes here. Please state your name and address, because none of us know who you are.
Yes. Name is Skeed Alfred, PO Box 913, Hollister, Florida, 32147. Mike's done a good job of explaining. All we're really asking for is to expand. When we first started this, we had 125 in mind. We never dreamed, actually, that 125, we would exceed that, but we have. And I guess, and all we're asking really is to increase the number of campers in this amendment. And far as the mud bogging in the pit, which is actually just something that's, it's part of the property anyway, and it's not trucks. We're just talking about the regular ATVs, which can ride against anywhere on the property, basically. So it's just adding that, and it was, I think it was something that was never really thought of when we did the original amendment about not letting ATVs in the mud pit. It was just something, when we originally did this, we were making this up as we went along. If any of you were here, well, none of you were here, but when we first started this, we were trying to solve a problem the county had with mud bogging, and so this actually was done, and it's just been done over time, and it's why we've had so many amendments trying to get it right. So, any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Alfred.
Good morning.
Thank you for coming, and my condolences about your father.
Thank you, thank you.
With this additional, and I realize, I've been around, I haven't been on the board, but when you started, you were trying to alleviate a problem of mud bogging that's going on and starting a business.
Correct.
And your business has grown quite substantially through this process. This 4.5 acres that is being proposed now to be increased, will that help eliminate any of the camping that is close to County Road 210 or 310 to get those vehicles off 310 a little faster than what the?
And I'm glad you mentioned that. This, the camping is just an area, it won't do anything to help what you're talking about. What this does is just creates, gives more room for, because we've increased the number of campers. On the traffic issue on 310 is what we've addressed. This is the last, we had the biggest event we've ever had, this last Super Bowl weekend, and we don't understand Super Bowl weekend. Somebody understands it, we don't understand it, but for some reason, that's why we started. If you remember how this started, was years and years ago, they mud bogged in Lake Ida, not Lake Ida, what's the lake there? Lake Lucy, or, yeah, I think, Lake Lucy, is where, is what brought all this to a head, because they were mud bogging in the lake bottoms and the ditches and everywhere, and that was just a big mess, and the county had a huge problem with that. So what we're doing is, that's why we got started. So what we're going to do about the traffic issue, there is a time on Saturday morning. We've opened up early, that's why we've expanded our hours now. If you notice, we've tried to take in people over a longer period of time to, where we don't have the influx of people at one time. So what we, that's why we started opening up on Thursday now. We have about a third of our customers come from south of Orlando, almost a third, about a third, we believe it's a third, or it could even, third or maybe even better, south of Orlando. So these folks come up, they want to ride more than two days. So they come, they generally come up on Thursday evening. So we've started taking people in over a longer period of time, hoping to relieve the pressure where it's not all, everybody trying to come in at once. The last event, we did have, biggest event we've ever had, to be honest with you. And so what we, we've looked at this, because we're always trying to solve these issues, these traffic issues, and what we've done is decided is on our next big event, and it's generally only about three or four hours on Saturday morning is when, when the traffic issue is, is when everybody's trying to come in that hasn't come in. And mostly, that's not campers on those days. On Saturday morning, it's very few campers, it's the day people, what I call the people just coming in to ride Saturday. So what we're doing is, we're going to open up entrance further down our property along that long straightaway, so everybody coming from the east, right now, we're trying to all come into one entrance, and we're processing them very fast. The Kiwanis Club, we use different organizations to help us process them in as fast as we can. We do it very, very fast, but it's still the number of people. So what we're going to do, we're going to open up an entrance a little further east, and everybody coming from the east is going to come in that entrance, and everybody coming from the west will come in the normal entrance, and that will alleviate everybody trying to come in one, and it should cut that traffic down, because the storage capacity, once they turn off the highway inside the property, is over a half a mile, so we could stack over a half a mile of vehicles. And our problem with, with traffic also is that when people come to Hogwaller, they're not coming in just a car. Most everybody, if you go out there and look, when you go there on Saturday morning, everybody's got a pickup, it's got, it's got a truck and a 16-foot trailer. So what normally, where two cars would take up just this area, when we get two customers, they're taking up four times the amount of space. So it makes our line a lot longer. It makes it look like it's a lot, lot of people, but if you actually stood, if they were just all in cars, the line would be not near as long, but they're just all in these trucks and trailers, and so almost every one of them on Saturday morning has a truck and a trailer. So that's why we're going to move our Saturday morning entrance on the big events further east to an entrance on the, on our property, and they will come in and we will get them off the highway that way, and then they're, and the people coming from the west will come in the normal entrance. So we believe this will about eliminate the people on the highway. So that's our proposal. We're going to try, we believe it'll work, because it gives us so much more storage capacity inside to eliminate the Saturday morning traffic. And after that, you know, there's not, there's very little time that they're on the highway. So that's our biggest concern. That's my biggest fear the whole time, is when that traffic's on the highway. And so far, we haven't had any accidents out there. Our customers are very safety-conscious, and plus, the Sheriff's Department's help is when we had them out there, we've had highway troopers out there, and we have, the Sheriff's Department has helped direct traffic to get them off the highway, and they pull off the side of the road. So, yes, it's, so we're trying to address it as, I guess, cost-efficiently and as diligently as we can.
Mr. Alfred, the other thing is, the PUD, in my opinion, and we kind of discussed this a little bit at length yesterday and this morning I did with staff, I look at a PUD as a file, and when you open the file, everything is in there and everything's up for conversation. Unlike the other zoning things that we have in the county, a PUD is your, your plan of how you want to develop this parcel. And we've done a lot of changes, and you've added a lot of acres as you've grown, but is there any way in the future that you could sit down with staff? Because I know you have some other things, staff, that you'd like to do out there. Is there anything else that you could sit down and say, okay, we're going to do one big PUD amendment at one time and clean this up, or is it just?
Well, I'm hoping, I can't think of any other issues right now. Hopefully, this cleared up our issue, because actually, we were asking for 250 spaces. Our, we have, we're a state licensed campground, we do not use all 250, so we still have room. So we purposely kind of overshot it to make sure that I won't be coming back, you know, the next time if we do it, expand. So that's, we kind of?
Well, I don't mind seeing you, but that's not?
But we, well, we're just trying to think ahead also. We do try to think ahead, and far as any other issues, I don't know what other issues that we would bring forward. We're not, if you notice, what one thing that we do do is that, like, I know some neighbors have some noise. have some noise, noise issues, and what we've done, if, if you will go look in what we've done, we have not done any trail development or any, I say trail development, there's trails, but we haven't done any improvements to the trail system for the west half of the property. We don't do any, like, it's always on the east side, if where we go out there in the woods and make mount, you know, hills for them to climb and stuff like that. We don't do any of that for the west half of the property. If you go out there and look, we don't do any improvements, you know, to encourage, other words, we don't encourage anybody to use the west side. We, we always do the improvements on the east side, which is furthest away from any pit, we're, we're the property owners on the east side, so we, we don't encourage anyone to go to the west side by making improvements over there. We always do our improvements on the east side to encourage all the riding more on the east side. Probably 75% of the riding takes place on the east side of the property, because we, we just haven't done any development on that last, for the last half a mile from the, what we call the half mile about in the middle, from the middle, the, the west half, we haven't done any improvements.
One last question, Mr. Alford.
Sure.
You have camping that goes on all year long, and it's approved inside your PUD.
We can, yes, sir. We, we don't, but we could.
Right, but your events are limited, does that cause you any issues of 10 a month and 60 a year?
The events, no, we're fine with the events.
Okay.
We can be open 365 days a year, but we, but that riding is contained from 8:00 AM in the morning to 8:00 AM at night, which is a UTV. And so we are getting customers now wanting to come during the week, we have kinda fought the, I guess, we're waiting for the market to develop more on that, I don't know if, you know, we just had a couple, two events ago fly in here from Colorado just to look at our place. They flew in here from Colorado just to check us out, to make sure, before they brought their, their units from Colorado, they wanted to come, they flew in here, and they did Disney as a side trip, but they came to look at Hogwaller. And so we, we have that type of stuff. With this last event, we had people from all the, from Carolinas, all the Carolinas, Georgia, Mississippi, we're getting them from Virginia now, and we're getting a lot of folks all up and down the, a lot of Georgia folks, we probably have 60 or 70 folks come from Georgia almost every event. So, I mean, we're getting, it's just not a local thing, all those, the people coming here are not local folks, these folks are bringing people from, they're not from here, they're bringing money from outside this area here.
Thank you, Mr. Alford, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the time.
No problem. Now, any other comments?
I do have a question. Just Alford.
Sure.
The adding of the UTV, ATVs in the mud pit 24 hours, why, why that? I mean, is it just-
In the mud, it's, it's during the event that we can ride 24 hours. It was kinda like, it's, if you can imagine, if you, I don't, I don't, I don't think you've ever been there, I don't think, so, if you can imagine, they can ride on 1,000 acres, and what we're doing, we're taking a, a, a five acre piece in the middle and saying you can't ride in this during the 24 hour. They can ride all around it, but they can't ride in it. If it actually, if it does anything, it disc, it keeps, if they're riding in the mud pit, that means they're not riding on the west side. You understand, other words, I understand, the west side is where the noise issue, if, you know, I'm trying to keep it as quiet, we don't, we, that's why we haven't done any development on the west side. So the mud pit is, is in the center to the east side, it's more on the east side than the west side. So it's really, it's just, it, there are areas just like that, it, all over the property, just like the mud pit out in the woods that they ride in. So I don't know, you know, it's, it's not any different, to us, it's not any different than any other acre in the whole property, I guess that's how we see it.
Okay.
But they still, Mr. Chairman, they still can't, they still can't ride in it during the mud hours, right?
Correct, well, during the day, when the trucks are there, during the, they can ride in it during, on ATV weekend, we have weekends that are truck weekends, that trucks are the only vehicles allowed in the mud pit during the day. We don't allow, we don't mix the ATVs and trucks because of, just scares the, scares us. If, it's just not a good situation, I've seen mud, a lot, we're the only, as far as I know, we're the only mud hole in the state of Florida that does it that way. Rest of them, if you go to Perry or down south and, and look at those, they allow the trucks and the ATVs in there, and it, it's scary. I don't, don't want any part of that. That's why we try to keep a family, our, we are known as the most family-friendly mud hole in the state, if you go and look, we are probably the largest now, I know we are the largest, but we're also the most family-friendly. All the others have reputations that you don't want here in Putnam County, I promise you. So we have the most family-friendly, that's why we get folks from all over coming, because they say, and we can bring our kids here and let them ride, and we don't have to worry about them, so that's one of our biggest attributes right now.
Thank you. Well, I have a couple comments. Now, it states in here that you actually, or Magnolia Dunes pays for a, an onsite EMS, an onsite-
We have a paramedic onsite, yes, sir.
Okay, is that part, is he, is he with the county?
No, sir, no, sir.
He's a-
They're paramedic.
Onsite?
Yes, sir, onsite, when we're, when we're open on the weekends.
Okay, and what about the police department?
They are there 24/7 when we're open on the weekends, not, on some of the ATV weekends, we don't, they're not there during the day because it's, it's not needed, what I'm saying, it's not needed, but when we're open, like mud bog weekends, anytime that we feel like it's needed, or the Sheriff's Office feels like it's needed, they're there. I mean, Super Bowl weekend, I think we had up to eight there at, at the time, just to help traffic and just keep a presence, that's one of, again, that's one of our biggest, when you talk to folks, we talk to a lot of folks, they say, they appreciate that more than, that's one of our, one of the things they appreciate the most is because we have a police, a real police presence, a lot of these other places just have people walking around with security on their shirt, well, that's kinda not good. So we have real cops, and, and these guys do a great job, they know that we don't put up with trash, and that's why we have the family-friendly atmosphere, all these others are sometimes out of control. So we, we are under control because these guys just don't put up with it, and we told them, and we give them permission to do, if they need to get rid of somebody, they're gone, we don't put up with it.
Okay, well, it states in here that these are not, we're not having to pay for this service as a county.
No, sir, we pay that, we pay the off-duty hourly rate for off-duty, the county has no expense in any of this, we pay everything.
Okay, and of course, in the next paragraph, states there was 221 calls, did that, did the county incur a cost with that, or?
No, sir, and if you go back and look, that was over, I did a breakdown.
Yeah, it's over a long-term period.
And, um, if, I read the minutes of the, the planning commission-
Yes.
And it stated, I gave out this sheet, but it wasn't made part of the minutes, it wasn't made part of the minutes, so, but I did give it out, and it states in the minutes that I gave it out, but for some reason, it didn't get made part of the record, I'm not sure what happened, so we did notice that. But I actually have a sheet here that breaks down the calls.
We actually have that record.
Okay, if you have it, then if you look at it, that 221 calls was based over how many years, and then that-
Seven years.
Yeah, so when you broke it down to what was actually, because they charged us for a call, every time EMS came out to a stage, sometime, we used to have EMS come out, so when they came out, not on a call, but they came out just to sit during the day, which we were paying for, they charged us a call for that day. So you, you do that times every time we, they came out every day, if you subtract all those, you know what I'm saying, it, the actual calls, if you look at the breakdown, you'll see it's not that, the actual calls is, for rescue is really small, for the number of people that we have there, it's very, very small, and the county has not incurred any cost, we pay for everything.
That's what I wanted to clarify, that it's not costing the county additional for EMS service or for-
No, sir, no, sir, when they were, when they're sitting there, we're paying them by the hour, I think it was like $75 an hour.
Okay, and it sounds like you're doing everything to keep the riders away from the residential side.
Yes, sir, that's why I say, we haven't, that's why we haven't done any development on the west half of the property. I mean, there's still trails over, I can't, people are gonna ride over there, but we haven't done anything to encourage, we haven't developed any trails or made any, what I call attractions or anything on that whole west half.
Okay. Okay, gentlemen.
Anything, what, the only thing we did do over there was build a berm, if you-
I've seen the berm, and I unfortunately-
And so we, we built the berm to try to help with the noise, and that's the only thing we've done over there.
Yeah, I should make a, a time to come down there and visit, I haven't. Uh, any other comments? With that case, if you sit down, we'll open it up for public comment. Uh, I have two blue cards, which doesn't mean that you don't, you don't have to have a blue card to speak, but, uh, you know, just come up your name and your address, my first one here is Ms. Cindy Locke.
I'm Cindy Locke, and I live on County Road 310 in Palaco, Florida. I did email everyone here a copy of the petition, I don't know if y'all received it or not, photos, a description of a map where the residents who signed the petition lives. Let's see here. The county approved this PUD for a recreational mud bog and ATV park with allowed 24-hour ATV riding with allowed alcohol use. The owner operates mud bogging and 24-hour ATV events that involves risks, injuries, and accidents requiring adults, minors, and children to sign a release form relieving the owner of any responsibility while EMTs, off-duty officers are on standby watching and hoping nothing happens. Now, the county recommends approval for the owner to double the campsites to 250 and amend mud bogging after 5:30 PM for 24 hours, increasing the risk of injuries and accidents to even more riders. Mud bogging is defined in Section 205.19 of the Putnam County Land Development Code and ends at 5:30 PM for ATV and UTV vehicles. This ordinance should apply to the entire mud bogging areas. The 24-hour allowed ATV riding in this PUD is advertised for trail riding. The entrance to this park is open 24 hours during events to anyone who is over the age of 16 to camp, visit, or ride. Alcohol is allowed in the entire site. The ATVs, mud trucks are equipped with loud aftermarket exhaust, the events already have thousands in attendance creating a loud atmosphere. Vehicles are pulled off the roadway for miles to enter the, the site causing traffic issues on County Road 310. Off-site parking is allowed, there are injuries, accidents, fights, and underage drinking at these events. The business with its hours of operation and allowed expansions is not compatible to the rural residential agricultural community, it is a nuisance to the abutting property owners and surrounding neighbors on the west side and east who signed the petition. The county has given little consideration to the abutting property owners and surrounding residents in the initial planning and many allowed revisions in this PUD. There are time limits when planning a PUD. We have endured revisions to this PUD since 2008. In Section 402.02 of the Putnam County Land Development Code, under justifications and minimum requirements for rezoning a PUD development, the design plan was to avoid undue noise, odors in traffic, and other nuisances and dangers to abutting property owners. Under motorsports facility, a minimum of 500 feet or more setback from the abutting property owners could have been required in this PUD. Our setbacks now are only 75 feet. The petitioners are asking the board to vote no to the increased campsites and to comply with the Putnam County Land Development Code under Section 205.19, ending mud bogging at 5:30 PM for all vehicles at this event, to comply with Section 302.33, the Putnam County Land Development Code, and move the ATV trail riding 500 feet or more from the abutting property owners and surrounding neighbors. And we're requesting the board to please reconsider ending this loud 24-hour ATV riding to possibly 6:00 PM, and close the park entrance at 12:00 PM, and require the owner to establish some sort of quiet time in the campground from 1:00 AM to 7:00 AM. These hours would alleviate the burden to the off-duty officers who work the site and decrease the noise and traffic to the, to the abutting property owners and surrounding neighbors who signed the petition and allow the county to enforce this PUD, and end the 365 days allowed riding at 6:00 PM. These are reasonable requests, we rely on the Putnam County Plan Development Code and ordinances to protect our land use, we rely on the county and the elected board members to protect our land, land use, and we rely on the owner of the property to be in compliant. And we also rely on the county to enforce a PUD and ensure the safety of the citizens who attend these events.
Ms. Locke?
If the county-
Ms. Locke?
Yes.
How much further, dear, are you going with this?
I've got one more thing to say, if the county cannot enforce this PUD, this 24-hour PUD, it may as well be one sheet of paper that says the owner of this PUD can do as he pleases. I'd like to leave you with a quote from Martin Luther King, "This is, the time is always right to do right." Thank you for letting me speak.
Miss Ma, did you have any questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Locke, you've heard Mr. Alford state this morning that there's gonna be an additional entrance to the east side of the property. My question to you is, do you think that this will help alleviate the traffic on-
Mr. Alford did not say if that was in the PUD, is that on his other property or in the PUD?
I will have to get clarification on that, so thank you for that. And you also heard Mr. Alford state that his unwillingness to develop the west side of the property, that hel, that helps prevent those ATVs and coming over to your side or the resident's side, not just your side.
The abutting property owners deal with ATV riding on Thursdays when he opens the events after 8:00 PM, which is after the PUD allows. They do ride on the west side, that's why we're here, and if you're trying to sleep, some of these people work on weekends, my husband works on weekends, Mr. Warren who signed this petition works on weekends, Mrs. Robin who signed this petition works on the weekends, they can't sleep. The mud bogging activity itself is, even though it's further away from us, the, the action of how they use these vehicles to mud bog is just as loud as the trucks that end at 5:30 PM, and now he wants to exceed that 24 hours?
Well, I-
We can still hear it.
Those are just two areas of concerns that you've shared with us, and I asked Mr. Alford about.
Yes, yes, sir.
So, thank you, Ms. Locke. Mr., might I have still have the floor?
Yes, sir.
Do you mind, Mr. Brown, you heard Mr. Alford mention the east entrance today, is that gonna be included on this PUD, or does it not need to be included on this PUD?
Well, it's, um, it's not included today in the PUD, that new entrance, I mean, what we have, we have a, I, um, a site plan, and that's what I've pulled up, which just shows the single entrance.
Okay. It could be included today, though.
Yes, I mean, it would just be an amendment to, if, if you want, to, yeah, re-amendment, it could be included, and we could work with him on amending this, staff could work with the applicant on amending the site plan to show the location and configuration of that new entrance, and that would probably be a, a good approach because we'd wanna include public works in that, because it will be an additional entrance that they will be interested in coming off of 310 to make, make sure it, it is designed appropriately so there's no damage to, to County Road 310.
Thank you, Mr. Still have the floor?
I thought you were done.
No, that's what I was kinda alluding to earlier in my conversations with Mr. Alford, is, you know, it seems like, and no fault of him, let me just say, do something, come back before the board, do something, come back before the board. My goal now is to do this prior to all that. So my question to you is, if you think that could be handled today, then I would rather us look at that prior to Mr. Alford opening up an east entrance, and then we're back here another month from now or two months from now.
Mr. Chairman, point of order, I'm sorry, Mr. Harvey does not have the right to negotiate in my behalf in this case, and I was trying to bring that up a moment ago, I may or may not be for what he is negotiating with them to do.
Okay, well, let, let, let Mr. Harvey go ahead and-
I, thank you, and I, and I agree with Mr. Turner, I'm not trying to get negotiate, I was listening to Mr. Alford talk about expanding an east entrance that I thought could be included today, that would solve the problem of coming back at a future date. And, Mr. Turner, I appreciate that.
I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I, I relinqu- Mr. Chairman, I relinquish the floor. Just a second.
May I say something?
Mr. Turner, uh, actually, Mr. Turner has the floor.
Um, I think that, that we ought to look at it in, in another way, in addition to what was just being talked about. The, the existing PUD is in every way compliant. It's in compliant with traffic counts. It's in compliant, I get it, that there's a busy spot. The owner, in his own interest, came in here and said, "Look, I've got to do something about this because of my customers don't want to sit on the side of the highway for two or three hours." I don't know that we need to, to burden him with another, another set of PUD regulations that says that, for instance, he has to open at every time that he opens his door or something like that. You know, so I think that it's easy to go too far with this also. Uh, I think it's in his best interest as a businessman to get those people off the road as quickly as possible and out of line. You know, it makes the neighbors happy, it makes his customers happy. And I realize this has probably gotten bigger than anybody thought that it would ever get. But I think that's a good thing for Putnam County, that we're bringing in all these people and having these events and, and they're seeing our fine county and they're bringing and spending some of their money here. Um, I don't, I don't, I understand that it's frustrating to some of the neighbors and for that, I, I'm sorry, I truly am. But it's an awful lot of, of business to, to not do this, so that's my opinion.
And, Mr. Turner?
Yes, sir.
These, these people who come to these events go to the hogwaller. They're there all weekend long and then they leave and go back home. They're not in Putnam County going to the river or eating out at restaurants or staying in hotels.
Chairman, I don't think it's appropriate that, under public comment, that I have to sit here and argue with Ms. Locke.
No, it's not. You have a very good, um, a, as we, we take it, does it necessarily have to be added into the PUD? Is it, is it, it sounds like that his, he's already in compliance with the traffic count and that's a, uh, if he adds an additional entrance, shouldn't make any difference to the PUD?
It, it shouldn't, but it should be included in the, in the master plan and the site plan for the, for the PUD.
Okay.
Um, and so that's what I was alluding to. Um, if the board conceptually agrees today that they support a second entrance, staff can work with the applicant to identify the location and how that will be designed and we would bring Public Works in, um, and we can incorporate that into the site plan.
Is that a county road?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so there's no DOT permitting necessary? They just have to pull a...
Just be working with Public Works.
Putnam County's culvert permit, driveway permit.
They would have to get that with Public Works.
Mr. Powell?
That's going to be an access point, so, yeah, we would want it added to the PUD.
Okay, so it will have to be added?
Yes, sir.
But it, now, at the times that it has to be open, that, uh, is that, you know, at the owner's option or is that at the, has to be included with the PUD?
If, if the county commission decides that they want to define that, we would need to put it into the PUD. Otherwise, it would be at the option of the, um, applicant and the owner.
Mr. Chairman?
May I?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I'm not trying to cause a problem here on the east entrance. Mr. Alford, you're the one that mentioned it and I was trying to help you not come back at a future date. That's all my goal is here and that's how I want to express it.
Mr. Chairman? Um, I think, um, unfortunately, i- if, if I'm hearing staff correctly, that that would require, um, that would necessarily have to be part of the PUD, which I believe is what I'm hearing. I believe that that would be a significant, um, change that did not go before the Planning Commission and was not, um, proper notice given for the public to address that location and the impacts that it might have. So, I guess what I'm saying is, I think i- if that's the direction, um, this should probably then go back to the Planning Commission with those revisions for additional recommendation and then have to come back again before this board.
Mr. Chairman, while I certainly, um, agree with what council said, if they have a driveway on the property that they own that's east of this PUD, if that was where they ended up placing it, then it would not be part of this PUD. And I disagree with our staff that it would be because it's on the property next door. So, they're eliminating traffic problems by utilizing other assets they have that are not part of this PUD. So, that's what I understood what they were talking about.
Okay, is that true, Mr. Alfred? Yes, please.
Correct. I mean, you're correct in that all we're trying to do is alleviate the traffic situation and, and we, we recognize it. So, that's why we, the, the entrance we're talking is a, is a, from the existing entrance is probably a half mile east of there. So, it, it doesn't, I mean, I, if we want to expand the PUD over there, I, I mean, that's just pretty significant. You know, I, it doesn't bother us a bit if you want to do that, but there are other issues because that's just ag land, which we could drive on anyway. I don't know if, where, that, the, actually, where it accesses the PUD, where, where you turn off the highway and where you actually come in touch with the PUD is a half mile. In other words, we're just driving people on our own private property. I'm with you, I don't know if staff, I, I don't want to get into the, disagree with staff too much, but ma, I may personally disagree in that it's a half mile from there. Other words, they're just driving on ag land, that's ag two, that's ag land, and just to get to it. It's, other words, I don't, I don't know where, if that would require the PUD. Other words, where they come and actually touch the PUD back is a half mile inside my property. And so, and this is only, we're only talking about for two or three hours. I only, they're on the road now for two or three hours when their traffic is backed up. When we take them off the highway, that, that entrance probably won't be needed, but about one or two hours at the most. You know what I'm saying? So, soon as the traffic goes down, because generally, the traffic starts back, gets heavy about nine o'clock on Saturday morning and by noon time to one o'clock, it's all gone. And that's with it all going in one entrance. We think when we split, you know, try to do it, it won't take an hour. So, we're only talking about using that entrance for an hour. I don't know if that's a significant enough to, I don't have a problem doing the PUD, but I do need to, I don't want to do anything to hold us up from the bathhouse part of this because what we, I do have before, we have a permit now, just got the sewer permit yesterday. I, I don't want to do anything to hold me up from adding this bathhouse. So, that's, that's my only concern. If we had to go back and do the PUD again, it's not an issue, I don't mind that. But I don't want to do anything to hold up what I'm trying to do with this bathhouse because I need that for these customers and to be in compliance. That's one of the things, I think, the folks that complain said, "Well, we, we had more campers." Well, to add the campers, I need the bathhouse. So, it's a catch 22.
Okay.
I'll be glad to work with you any way possible.
Well, but real quick, before I turn it over to Mr. Harvey, this entrance is not connected to Magnolia Dunes' part of the PUD, correct?
It's, it's owned by Magnolia Dunes and it touches it, but it, I can't explain it.
Is it, is it actually in their property?
It's, yes, it's on Magnolia Dunes' property.
That's, that's good.
It, and it's a legal entrance, there's a, a already existing entrance that we use to access the pastures there. We're just going to turn them in and it would give us a half mile extra to store.
Mr. Alfred, since I have the floor, I apologize, I was just, I heard you.
I understand.
I was just trying to be helpful and maybe the best thing for us to do is end the conversation and you bring it back at a future date on a future PUD, is from what I heard.
Well, can we discuss with staff whether or not it's really needed? I would like to have that conversation with staff.
Uh, do you want to do this?
No, no, later on.
Okay.
If we can approve what we're talking about and then I don't have to do, and my next event, my next event where I would need that would not be until Thanksgiving next year.
Okay.
There's two events that we use it for. It would just be for two events, too. Thanksgiving and, um, Super Bowl weekend.
Mr. Chairman, I yield the floor. Okay, uh, Mr. Turner?
Yeah, the only thing I had to say was, is I think the best way to handle this day is exactly what y'all just came up with, is go ahead and either pass or don't pass, whatever the board wants to do with this today. And then just ask Mr. Alford before he does anything that would violate his PUD agreement to come in and talk to staff and see if we do need to go through another process. That, the way, if it passes today, it will not hold him up any further and he can go on and make the arrangements he needs to make.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Can I just make one s, one statement from staff?
Yes.
From myself. I did not understand, my, my understand, I assumed that the, uh, new entrance was going to be a new entrance onto this property. Um, I'm not saying my, my position would change any, but that was what I, because this was the first I had heard about an alternate, a, a second entrance. And I thought it was something different than what's being discussed, uh, that Mr. Alfred, uh, has been discussing. So, I just wanted to make that point clear.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Mr. Brown, uh, Mr., uh, yes, sir, Mr. Tompkins?
We do not.
Is this still in the discussion of the road?
Yes, sir. All I want to say is, we, all they need to do is come to Public Works and pull a permit for that driveway so we can make sure it, it meets the right specifications and requirements for what they're using it for.
Okay.
Or if it's a driveway that's already grandfathered in because they've used it to access the pastures for the last 45 years, then it's probably, unless you're not going to deem it to be grandfathered in.
Well, it, it's, Commissioner, it is grandfathered in for the use that it is using now, since they're changing the use of it. That's why we request for it to be permitted so we make sure it's done correctly.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Joe Locke? Yeah, and as usual, state your name, your address.
Hi, Joe Locke, 109 Rodman Lane, Palaca, Florida. Usually, I don't have to stand that close. I'm opposed to the request to modify the hogwaller 24-hour ATV, UTV mud bogging. Uh, these changes will only add to the noise and chaos this site generates that nearby residents must endure. This PUD and the county, uh, Putnam County Land Development Code defines mud boggings, vehicles regulated, and ours, these events are allowed. How staff came up with the conclusion that it wouldn't create no more noise is, is beyond me and I'll stand corrected if staff wants to say anything different. I don't believe staff's ever been on site. I've lived within a mile of the place and I can tell you, it generates more noise, mud bogging does. Uh, why should this business be exempt from this ordinance? Allowing 24-hour ATV, UTV mud bogging will generate more noise for nearby residents to endure, endure all night during these events. Uh, the, the problem out there is not the access to the property. The problem, the problem is, and he admits it, is it's grown beyond all expectations. They're too crowded. Allowing additional 125 campsites will increase noise and congestion at a venue which has outgrown its current location. During the October, not the, not the November, the October 2017 and the January 2018 events, the venue was so crowded, the vehicles, not just in the morning, all day, were on the side of the road. And like he said, these are trucks with trailers with multi ATV, UTVs. They're unloading on the side of the road. They were parking across the road at private residence. They was also parking at the place he's saying, which is east of his venue, which is not part of the PUD, which is ag property, which is taxed at ag property, not commercial property prices. So, the county's moving out. And these vehicles were running across the road. ATVs were going both direction on, on County Road 310. I did not see any sheriff's deputies out there. It was a very hazardous condition for the vehicle or traffic coming up and down the road. This, this business has been shown preference all during the, the whole, since it's been conceived. If I approached the county and told you that I wanted to open a, a dance hall or a music venue, I was going to locate it 75 foot from a residential area, I was going to generate the amount of noise that he generates. If I was going to have it open 24 hours a day, allow onsite alcohol consumption, and have unaccompanied, uh, minors there, they'd laugh me out of the bill, probably out of the county, man. There, there's no way you would let a business like that come into the county. This, this business has been allowed to grow with no consideration for, from the county or from the owner operation to the negative effect it has on nearby residents' properties, rights, and the danger it proposed, it poses to citizens traveling nearby. The county has further neglected the responsibility by not enforcing the PUD. Please vote no to the modification of this current PUD. Please constrict, consider restricting hours of operation of this business to protect public safety and improve the compatibility with nearby residents as required by the Putnam County Land Development Code. Thank you for listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
I do have one.
Yes, sir, Mr. Harvey.
Not for you, Mr. Locke. I'm going to, I've heard this twice this morning and I need a little clarification on it. Mr. Brown and Mr. Manning? Well, Mr. Brown, maybe you can answer this. This idea's come up twice from the Locks today. Does a PUD trump our county ordinance? So, we have county ordinance in play and then we have a PUD that we can modify. Okay, so I guess I need a little clarification on that.
The PUD is a zoning district in and of itself. I mean, the Magnolia Dunes PUD is...
Well, it doesn't matter who the PUD is.
Is its own zoning district and sets the standards for development within that project. So, it does, the, at the time that the board, the previous boards approved it and put the conditions on it, that's, it did trump the land development code for those special uses.
Well, I'm not just referring to theirs, I'm referring to any PUD that could be out there. The, any PUD could trump the local land development code, the ordinances that are in play.
Yeah, for that specific, yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all the questions I have.
Any other questions? Do you want to wait for Mr. Manning or?
No, I'm good. Yeah.
Okay. Please come to the front and, uh, your name and your address.
Speak in favor or against?
Oh, are you speaking in favor or against?
Well, I, I didn't come to speak on either, but I, I do have a concern about this. My name is Linda Kemp. I live at 103 Grove Street in Melrose. I'd like them to put up the, um, photo again with the ATV and the monster truck. Now, I've been to, uh, I've been, been to mud bogs in Newberry. I have not been to this one. But if you look at this, a monster truck is a monster truck and can traverse through the mud pit, which is usually about two feet deep in mud. And if they can't make it out, they pull them out with a winch and the mud, you know, mud's flying everywhere. But I cannot understand how a, a smaller ATV would be allowed to go through a deep mud pit without some major problems and, and, and I'm concerned about teenagers trying to do this. Are the ATV drivers licensed? And when you add in alcohol in a country setting, it, it's, doesn't look like a pretty picture to me. So, um, you know, if the ATVs were not allowed in the mud pit, I would probably vote for it. But I think the ATVs in the mud pit are going to be a big problem. Do you know if, if the drivers of these smaller ATVs are licensed drivers? Or are teenagers? Are, are they, do they have to be licensed to drive the ATVs?
Chairman, she needs to talk to this board, not to the audience.
Yeah, please, uh...
Do they have to be licensed to drive the ATVs? They don't? Okay, I see, I see it as a major problem. Okay, that's all I have for comments. Please consider that.
Okay. Any other public comment for or against?
Those chairs are difficult, I know they are.
Uh, Mark Fisher, Ken, Mark Fisher, County Road 310, Palaca. Um, even in the invocation this morning, I, I don't know what's taken so long. Even in the, I've kept four invocation this morning, it talked about bringing people to Putnam County. They've done bike trails, cost millions of dollars, they talk about 20. Hogwaller brings in that, on some weekends, thousands of people that don't care about 20, they don't care about the bike trails. Uh, I've spent time out there. Last year, I was selling tickets for something Bill knows about. And, uh, you know, I, I just sat there and I watched people. I mean, you have... I mean, you have, there are kids in car seats with their parents and these things, and it is not just four-wheelers. There's kids out there, there's a group that has, that built up old lawn mowers, and they've been in that pit. And they come out of there with mud head to toe, and they love every minute of it. And I just, I see ages all the way up to almost my age, they get groups together out there. I just see nothing but people having a great time out there. Everything, they had the old entrance before this one, where they had a problem, he moved that to take care of that problem. I don't see any problem with him taking care of what's going on now. I just, you know, it's agriculture out there, it's not residential. It could have been a hog farm or a feedlot go in there, and then you have to deal with smell twenty-four-seven. So, I mean, I just, I, I see nothing but prob, and it's not people just stay there. Try and get in a gas station when they have a big weekend out there. I don't even bother trying to fill my truck up. It's just they go to nearby grocery stores, they have to make special orders to keep up with what's going out there. So I just don't see a problem with passing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Please come forward, your name, your address, and are you for or against?
My name is Luanne McClellan, five oh-one County Road three-ten, Palatka. And we have property directly across from Hogwaller. We've been there over thirty-five years, so we were there well before Hogwaller began. And I know there's been a lot of complaints from other people. We are not one of the families that has complained or signed any petitions. We're for this event. When the wind blows, there is some noise. Never one night have we been awakened by noise. It has not affect, affected our quality of life at all. Skeet has been very careful to work with the traffic. This last big event was probably the biggest event he ever had, and the traffic was on the side of the road. I went to town on Saturday, I had no trouble going past it or coming back. After an event like that, there's trash on the road. He has his crew out on Monday morning picking up trash. He's been very considerate of that. And I think it's good for the community, I think it's good for the families. Someone mentioned that they were parking across the road on private property. That was our property, that was my grandson's. They can park out there anytime they want to. We have our family, the McClellans have absolutely no opposition to him increasing it. We think it's good for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Locke? I'm gonna have you come up, but I'm gonna have you.
This is not a negotiation.
I'm gonna have you speak very, very quick. I'm, I'm, I mean, very quick.
That she can have her relatives park on that property, but they cannot allow ATVs to ride on County Road three-ten or the roadway. It's illegal to the Hogwaller. And I personally saw them leaving out of their property and driving straight down there.
Yes, ma'am.
That is an issue out there with several residents who live out there and have ATVs and want to go to the Hogwaller.
Yes, ma'am. And I'm just gonna say, I haven't had, I haven't heard of any police reports. I'm, I'm sure they don't patrol, it's probably as much as the residents think they should, because I hear that all over. But I, I haven't, I haven't heard of any arrests made with ATVs off the side of the road. Okay, any comments?
Was there any more public?
Any more public comments? Okay, we'll close that section now, and we'll move to Commissioner's comments.
Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared for a motion if you are. My motion would be as to, on case PUD seventeen dash zero zero three, applicant Magnolia Dunes, that we approve the assault after amendment.
Okay, we have a proper motion in effect?
A second.
Have a proper second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, all those against, it'll be the same sign. Any comments? Issue's closed. Let's move to case HR eighteen dash zero zero one, Melrose Historic Society.
Mr. Chairman, again, Mike Brown, Putnam County Planning and Development Services. We'll try to speed it up a little bit. HR eighteen dash zero zero one is an application from the Melrose Historic District Committee to nominate three properties to be placed on the county's local register of historic places. The three sites are the Lee House, the Baldwin Store, and the Baldwin House. Real briefly, the county adopted the Melrose Historic District as part of the comprehensive plan. The land development code establishes a local register for historic places as a means of identifying and classifying various sites, buildings and structures, objects as historic and/or architecturally significant. On July twelfth of two thousand and sixteen, the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners adopted Resolution two thousand and sixteen forty, which created the Melrose Historic District Committee. The historic committee performs all the preservation-related duties otherwise performed but, or, and set forth to be performed by the Zoning Board of Adjustments, including the submitting of nominations for listing on the local register of properties within the Melrose Historic District. As I indicated, one of, the first nomination is the Lee House, is built in eighteen seventy-nine by Melrose architect and builder William Lee. He was a businessman, and him and his wife and great, did a lot of work and was significant to the Melrose area. The Baldwin Store, many of you have probably, if not been in there, have passed by it. It serves as a, again, it was also constructed by Mr. William Lee. And it has been restored and serves as a, sort of a mini museum for the area. The Baldwin Home is right next door to it. It was built in nineteen oh-two, and presently, and it was originally the homestead for the Baldwin Storekeeper. And it serves now as a Melrose, the Melrose Bay Art Gallery. There are certain criteria set forth in the land development code for nominations. It must, the site must possess integrity of location, design, setting, materials, and workmanship, must be associated with events that have made significant contribution to local, state, or national history, must be associated with the lives of persons, persons significant in local, state, or national history, or it must embody distinct characters of type, period, and method of construction. Based on the information provided by the Melrose Historic District Committee, each of the three properties meets the requirement of, that it possesses integrity of location, design, and workmanship. And in addition, all three nominations meet at least one of the other three criteria which is required to meet. Just in addition, each of the property owners have submitted, as part of the application, a signed letter of their agreement to be included on, within the local historic register. With that, staff recommends approval of the nomination of the following sites to the county's local register of historic places, the Lee House, the Baldwin Store, and the Baldwin House. Any questions of staff?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Commissioner.
Mr. Brown, thank you, and you did an outstanding job, and, and I do support these three places going on the historic area. The only, I only have a comment, and it has nothing, please do not take this offensive. I started getting emails in support of this without even knowing that this was coming up in my district. So maybe in the future, when this thing starts going down the funnel, if the commissioners could be notified that you're going to receive something soon.
Okay.
Because I kind of like, I don't even know what we're talking about, and it was in my district. So that was just my little comment, so, you know, no, no biggie. Took me a day or two to get wrapped around it and go find all the moving parts, and then I knew what was happening at that point.
All right. Staff will.
Thank you, sir.
Fine, thank you.
Commissioner.
I'm good.
Okay. Then at this time, we'll open it up for public comment. Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
No, I'm good.
Okay. We'll open it up for public comment. I had two cards here. Are you one of these cards?
Stasha Rudolph, six five two State Road twenty-six. I thank you for considering. We did a lot of hard work. But I also wanted to recognize Mike Brown, because for the last two years, he has been so responsive to our small group. And I know he has a lot more, bigger issues to deal with, but I got to tell you, when we email or call him, he helps us through the process. So you have a little gem over there, want you to know that. And these three locations are really at the heart of Melrose Historic District, so thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Linda Kemp?
Ms. Kemp, what they do in Tallahassee, they wave and support if you don't want to say anymore.
Well, I, I handed in the card for two other issues, which I think we'll address at the next public comments, the next commission meeting. But I just want to say thank you, and tell you that I'm the president of the Melrose Historic District Committee, and thank you very much for all your help. And again, lads to overhear, Mike Brown. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll close that portion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt R eighteen dash zero zero one, with the adoption of the three places on the historical residence as presented.
Okay, we have a proper motion, we have a proper second.
I'd be happy to. Neither one?
Okay, we have a proper first, a proper second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, all those. Not in favor? Same sign. Mr. Manning, did you have a comment?
No, just before the next hearing.
Okay, well, this motion moves. Okay, now we'll move on to the next case. Did you have a comment on that one, or did you?
Yeah, I just wanted to remind you all this is, as well as being a public hearing, since this is a rezoning request, it is quasi-judicial in nature, and ask that, that you all disclose any ex parte communications you have had with the parties, the parties being the applicant, the applicant's representative, or, or staff on the issue.
Okay. Mr. Turner?
I've had none with anybody concerning.
Mr. Harvey?
I've had none, sir.
Mr. Pickens?
I've had discussions with staff, and I also spoke with Joey Froelich, who sits on the planning commission.
And I've had conversation with Mr. Everett concerning the tractors only.
Okay, and I've had none. Okay. So we will.
And then we'll need swearing in for testimony as well.
Okay. All those that need to swear in for testimony, please come to the podium.
Yeah, if you're gonna give any comments, any comments at all?
Yep.
Okay, and I guess I have a note here from Mr. Jerry Hafner, so you'll need to swear in, please.
Mr. Powell?
Oh, Mr. Powell. All those.
Kenny does the swearing in.
Okay, all these, okay, then this will be Mr. Kenny's. Okay. Now we'll move to the presentation.
Mr. Chairman, please the board, we have rezoning seventeen dash zero one one. The applicant is Francis Earl Everett, agent is Patty Kennard. The request is a zoning district change from commercial general C three to commercial intensive C four on two parcels totaling four point zero three acres. The purpose of the requested zoning map amendment, as stated by the agent on the application for rezoning, was to, one, facilitate heavy vehicle and equipment sales and service, and, two, allow recreational vehicle sales, service, and repairs. At the January eight, two thousand and eighteen Planning Commission, the applicant's agent stated that the end use may also be manufactured housing sales and services. Properties are located at one seven four and one seven six South Highway seventeen in East Palatka. Here's an area of the two subject sites outlined in blue. Future land use designation for the two parcel sites is commercial. Current zoning of the two subject parcel sites is commercial three. This is what it would look like if the proposed zoning district were enacted, changed to C four. This is C four zoning within a half-mile radius of the current subject site. There are four, technically five, C four zone properties within a half a mile of the proposed site. Comprehensive plan consistency, something that staff looks at in terms of criteria. What's important to note that these, for commercial future land use categories, are areas located in close proximity to concentrations of population and have good access to arterial and collector roads. Community commercial uses, which this would be, shall be located on sites that have direct access to paved roadways with a collector or higher roadway functional classification, are accessible to their intended market or service area, and do not require significant non-residential vehicle or traffic to pass through the established neighborhoods. The existing zoning of C three is our general commercial zoning district. Again, also requires immediate access to major minor arterial roadways. The proposed zoning of C four is our more and most heaviest, commercial intensive zoning district. This requires immediate access to major and minor arterial roads. This is just a quick side-by-side comparison of what's allowed in the C three zoning district and what's allowed in the C four zoning district. Two important things to look at within C four, manufactured housing sales and services, and truck stops are allowed, but would never be allowed in C three by right or with the issuance of a special use permit. It's important to note that any of the uses allowed by right could go in if permitted today. Analysis, the future land use commercial is consistent with the proposed C four zoning. The applicant's proposed uses are permitted uses in the C four zoning district, but not in the existing C three zoning district. The proposed uses are accessible to the intended market or service area and do not require significant non-residential vehicle or traffic to pass through established neighborhoods. According to the traffic circulation element of the comp plan, Highway seventeen is designated as a principal arterial. The county has adopted Level Service D for the section of Highway seventeen, and the segment of Highway seventeen in the area of the rezoning is operating at a level, acceptable level of service, both in AM and PMP towers. Per county GAS, the parcels are not in a floodplain, they do not contain wetlands. Parcels are appropriate to commercial infill locations. The proposed uses will be located on sites that have direct access to paved roadways with a major or minor arterial roadway functional classification, and the types of commercial uses in site development standards are subject to further regulation by zoning district standards provided for in the land development code. Findings and recommendations, it's worth noting, Planning Commission voted four-two to recommend approval for the rezoning. Per twelve eleven oh-one K of the land development code, which sets forth the procedures for rezoning, staff finds that the proposed rezoning is, one, consistent with a comprehensive plan, two, the rezoning complies with the applicable procedures and requirements of the land development code. It is worth noting in the same section that if the proposed rezoning meets the above requirements, the board may nevertheless deny the application if the board finds the existing zoning, existing zoning, which is C three in this case, serves a legitimate public purpose. Based on the criteria, staff recommends approval of the request to amend the zoning map from C three to C four. Any questions for staff?
Commissioners? Okay. We'll move to public comment.
Applicant?
Oh, applicant? That's true.
The agent, I believe, for the applicant is here today.
Who is the agent for the applicant? Please come forward, please.
Hi, my name is Patty Kennard. I'm employed by Mr. Earl Everett, who, I'm sorry, he wasn't able to be here today. He had illness. He's, he's been going through some tough times right now with his health. But I can answer any questions that you may have, and hope to, hopefully, get this thing going through. I'm kind of new at this.
Questions?
Not at this time.
Not at this time.
Okay. Sit down and.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. ... Did you have some questions?
I have a comment on this. As we see on the slide that is up there, it talks about, is it conducive with the zoning? I don't believe it is. So my recommendation would be no, from C-three to C-four, based on that. If you look at the overlay, the intensive commercial use in that district, I don't think should be there.
Interesting.
That's very interesting.
All right.
You're looking at...
Okay, now, we'll take comments now. Okay, Mr. Turner?
Actually, I'm in agreement with you. I read the Planning Commission minutes as closely as I could, and the best I could ascertain was some of the questions that were asked by some of the members of the Planning Commission. I see Mr. Hafner's with us today, and he's one of them, but some of the members of the Planning Commission asked questions about it being consistent with the area, and I think they may have been told that they're not allowed... I think the chairman of the Planning Commission made a comment in the minutes that they weren't allowed to take use into context as they were doing this. But I know that they can't take particular use into use, but they're gonna take overall use of what can go in there in the context. And that's the problem I'm having with it. You know, I didn't realize until yesterday, when I met with some people around here, that they had taken the special use permit in C-three out to be able to even do this use at all. You know, I guess it was done after I left the Planning Commission. So personally, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna take your recommendation here, Mr. Powell, and I just don't see how I can be for this, because I just don't see how you... I don't think we'd want a truck stop there. I don't think we'd want, you know, under some of the, even some of the more intense things would allow them to come in and get a special use permit to do other things that we don't want there, such as a flea market, a nightclub. I mean, I know there'd be another level of them in there, but that's not even an allowable use on some of the others. So, I mean, the passenger vehicle service and repair, recreational vehicle boat service and repair, heavy vehicle service and repair, heavy equipment sale, service, and repair. You know, it just makes the use a lot more intense, so...
Right, I feel that the C-three zoning is pretty intensive on that area, too, but to go to intensive commercial, it's not conducive with that area. I think this is an area that we need to look at, this is a prime corridor for East Palatka, and having the potential for a salvage yard or something like that that can go in there under special use permit in the future is what concerns me.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Harvey.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Powell, I agree with you. I looked at this and surely we can't pick out what we don't want there, but we can pick out the zoning as far as, does it fit? And recently, we increased one not far from there, only to find out that, kinda opened the door for something, and I don't want to open that door again when we're trying to create a corridor there that's consistent. And I think anything more would be inconsistent. So, Mr. Chairman, that'll be the end of my comments.
Okay, any other comments?
Yes. Unfortunately, the criteria that Mr. Zayer went by, it does allow for it to go C-four if it wanted to. But is it the right thing to do? What I am very much concerned that the zoning change into anything more intense follows this property into the future, no matter who owns it. And with the things you just named and Mr. Turner just named, we can't allow that to happen in the gateway to our county seat. Now, is there a overlay needed there? Absolutely, without a doubt, because C-three is intense in itself.
It is, a little too intensive.
And I have no problem with the tractor sales or anything Mr. Everett's endeavoring in here, but to make it any more intense will not serve our overall desire to create a very attractive corridor in that region. And we have probably, well, no, we're experiencing the most investment in our county in retail and food franchises are happening in that corridor as we speak. And to keep that flowing and job creation going, economic development in general, I think that we need to stick with the current zoning.
I agree. Also, we're not taking into consideration the residents that live behind it. You know, you get too intensive, then it's gonna affect them living directly across the street from whatever may go in there that's intensive in the area.
Yes, sir, Mr. Pickens.
I agree, and I agree with your last comment. I was concerned when I saw it was gonna, could go to C-four of all the things that could go there in the future. I don't have a problem with the tractor sales, but you also have to take into consideration the neighborhood that's directly behind there and what they would have to deal with if this were able to progress to a C-four and maximize the intensity of it, so...
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Just second, Mr. Hafner?
I'm Jerry Hafner, one-twenty-two Healthy Lane in East Palatka. I want to thank three of the commissioners for pretty well slaughtering my presentation here.
You're very welcome, sir.
Now, I do want to point out, I've served on the zoning board of adjustment for a number of years. I've served on the Planning Commission for about ten or twelve years now, and still am a current member of the Planning Commission. I've served with Commissioner Turner. In looking at, oh, and I've also been involved with Palatka Main Street as the president of that organization, and I'm now a member of Revitalized Historic Palatka. So as you can imagine, I am very much against the C-four zoning in this area. All of the things that y'all have already talked about, and there's one other thing that none of you, I don't think you mentioned it. I know for a fact if that property is rezoned for C-four, they will use Ferry Road on the backside, which leads to what I consider to be the second most dangerous intersection in Putnam County. And I think if it's allowed to happen, we're going to have many, many problems in the future. As a matter of fact, at some point in time, I want to grab each one of you individually and take you to the intersection that I'm talking about and show you the concerns. Had a highway patrolman almost slam into me at that intersection, his fault, three days ago. So, anyway, along with everything y'all said, I am very much against this. I think that corridor needs to be protected. It's fairly, it's actually, I think, kind of a narrow corridor compared to when you look at other parts of these highways. If you go out two-oh-seven, or if you go farther down seventeen, things seem to widen out where you can use larger trailers and things like that to be able to access properties. So, anyway, again, I am in total opposition to this program. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Please come forward.
Well, I understand that you have to think about what rezoning it to C-four could entail. Whenever you mentioned possibly having a nightclub or a flea market or something to that effect, would it not be that those things would have to come before the board to get approved? We're not asking for any of those things. And I do not think that rezoning it to C-four would just automatically allow anyone to put any of those things there. Is that correct?
That's...
Would that not have to come before the board to be approved?
Depends on which one it is, Mr. Chairman. Some of the uses are available by right. A truck stop, the trailer, the trailer sales, vehicle sales with service and repair.
Those are under C-three zoning as well.
No, ma'am, they're under C-four. I had it right here, they're C-four without by right.
Those are under C-three as well.
No, ma'am, they're not.
Trailer sales are not?
If I could just jump in for a second. Under C-four zoning, anything allowed within the use category would be allowed by right. The difference, major difference, when you get into the recreational vehicle sales, passenger sales, heavy equipment sales, they actually are allowed in C-three, but the difference is, in C-four, you can do heavy repair. So you can do bodywork. You can do also the sales, but by right, you can also do a heavier use, which is repairing and bodywork. So it's very similar, but you then add on the repairing. So there is a difference, that's what I would distinguish it from. Additionally, you do have the manufactured housing and services, and you do have the truck stops, which would be allowed by right in C-four and not in any way, shape, or form in C-three.
Okay, understood.
Yep, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, go ahead, Mr. Libley.
Turner, you still have the floor?
No, sir, I'm done, thank you, Mr. ...
All right. Mr. Libley?
Just to Mr. Brennan's comment, also, if we were to approve this zoning, there would be no more regulatory reviews from this point forward with everything you just named. Am I correct or not?
Correct, unless the applicants requested a special use permit, but that would go to the zoning board of adjustment and not to the funding.
That's for you, ma'am.
Okay, yes, sir, that was my question. So those things that you mentioned, I think someone mentioned a... A, like a...
Junkyard?
The junkyard and then the... The bar-type thing, or whatever. Those things would be...
Those would have to go before the zoning board of adjustment for a special use permit.
Right, that's all I'm asking, is that, you know, those things not be considered as a part of what we are asking for, because we're not asking for those things, and those things would have to be approved before they could happen.
Not all of them.
Not all of them.
Not all of them.
Just the two that you named, Mr. Chairman, if I may, just the two that you named. The ones that I named, which are the housing sales and service, the truck stop, the service and repair of vehicle sales, and vehicle boat sales, service, and repair, heavy vehicle service and repair, and heavy equipment sales, service, and repair. Those would be allowed by right. So anybody that wanted to put a truck stop there, for instance, could just go to start building it.
Okay, I understand that. I was just, you know, pointing out, though, that a lot of those things that you just named are already allowed under the C-three zoning. Just those two things that he mentioned are the only two things that would be allowed under C-four that are not already allowed.
That's incorrect. The passenger vehicle sales service and repair is key, and repair. Recreational vehicle boat sales service and repair. Repair is the key word, it's the operative word there.
Right.
So the repairing is considered a heavier use that would not be allowed in C-three. It is allowed in C-four by right.
Right. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Mr. Powell, you had a question?
I just have one less comment, that the board finds that this area, the existing zoning is correct for the area, per the LDC. So I wanted you to take that into consideration. And there again, taking into consideration, I don't feel that C-four zoning is right for that area.
Yes, sir. Okay, any other public comment?
Mr. Chairman, if there's no more public comment, I'd like to make a motion.
Well, I'm gonna close this, I'll close the public comment and open it up for...
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, on R-seventeen dash zero-one-one, I recommend the board deny the C-four on this applicant.
Okay, we have a proper motion on the floor. I have a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a proper second. All those voting to not approve this zoning, please say aye.
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 Okay, all those against? Seeing none? The motion is for nonapproval.
Mr. Chairman, if I could make one comment before we lose staff, perhaps. When y'all send us a part of our packet and you include maps, are y'all so technologically disadvantaged that you can't send them in color? Have you tried to figure out from one of them maps that you sent us? I mean, it's all black and white, there might be some different shades. And everything's C-four, C-three, everything's the same color unless you didn't shade it at all. I mean, that's kinda makes it difficult to figure out what's going on.
Understood, we, yes, we can correct that. I know where the issue fell.
I appreciate that.
One additional thing, based on this discussion, staff will start working on and bring it to workshop in the near future, some type of overlay or corridor overlay for this area and maybe other areas to the board. Sometime in the near future.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before we move from this particular item, not that I want to expand our meeting any further than we already have, but I think it's appropriate to point out a couple of things now that the public hearings are over, is that this is a great opportunity and a great discussion by our commissioners. This is a great example of the checks and balances that are in place throughout the entire process when we have these type of hearings. And I applaud staff for taking the stance that they did with the vision that they had for that corridor and for having this very direct conversation here this morning about what it is. So we anticipate the corridor that is the entrance to the seat of our community, our county here. And I applaud this commission as well for looking out into the future for what it is that we want our community to represent. And I think that was a very bold step by staff, and I applaud my staff for taking that stance here this morning.
Thank you. All right, let's move to appointments.
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to state that my Better Place Plan appointment from a few months ago has decided to resign, and so I'll be looking for another appointment. But I would, in the meantime, like to publicly thank Ms. Tina Arant for all the years she spent working with the Better Place Committee. And like I said, I will be searching for somebody else, and that will be added back on as an appointee for the District Three Better Place.
Okay.
And that's all I have at this time, sir.
Commissioner Harvey?
I have no appointments, sir.
Commissioner Libley?
No appointments.
I have none.
Mr. Pickens, okay, I have none. I don't think there's any comment on that, so let's move to our county administrator.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, thank you again. Another great meeting here today, I have two, actually I have more than two, but we're gonna start with a funding opportunity. Ms. Mary Garcia, Mr. Ryan Simpson brought an opportunity to me and Ms. Papel earlier this week, or was it late last week, who knows these days? Anyway, it's an opportunity, recently, there you go. It's a funding opportunity to retrofit our health department that might be able to help us also decrease some of our shelter issues during time of need. I've asked both of them if they would today to give us a little more information for the commission to be able to understand this process.
Thank you, Mr. Suggs, and good afternoon, all of you. We are happy to report that the Putnam County has received a shelter mitigation retrofit offer. And essentially, the DeFlota Division of Emergency Management has a program. It's a shelter retrofit program in which funds are offered to communities that have public buildings in which they want to retrofit. We're happy to report that a hundred percent funding has been offered to Putnam County to address the campus at the Putnam County Health Department. The project basically would aim to strengthen the windows and the walls, the building envelope, at the health department. They have a number of buildings on their campus, and so this would address a number of those buildings. But, you know, these funds essentially would dovetail perfectly into the county's mitigation program. Of course, during Blue Skies, one of emergency management's missions is to look to ways in which we can strengthen our infrastructure from future disaster, and so that's exactly what this does. This also, this project would also increase the amount of shelter spaces and the shelter capacity which Putnam County has. As many of you know, we saw close to two thousand residents that seeked shelter during Hurricane Irma. Over two hundred of those individuals were special need clients and needed additional special care. And so this, again, the goal of this project would be to strengthen a publicly owned facility. And while we have received notice, offer notice, it is, I'm very happy to report that in a future board meeting, Ms. Garcia and I would propose the actual funding agreement itself. But we thought it would be appropriate that we notify the board of this offer that had been received of a hundred and seventy-five thousand to retrofit the campus at... The campus at the Putnam County Health Department. So I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Yes, sir, Mr. Libley?
Help me describe the area that you want to retrofit. I mean, how many patients are we trying to, I'd call them patients, but clients are we trying to accommodate? It doesn't seem like you have the room, let me just say that.
No, so remember that during Blue Skies or after the event, we still had clients that we were very fortunate that we were able to send to nursing homes.
very fortunate that we were able to send to nursing homes, but there were some clients that this, I mean, needless to say, Irma was, uh, the catastrophe of the century. So, or 500 years, I think, if Quinn was here, he would tell us that. So, but we were very fortunate in working with nursing homes and ALFs to be able to have some of our clients be able to move back, and that herms weren't completely destroyed. But in some situations, there may come a time, I mean, we've had in the past, had to put clients in hotel rooms, we've had to put them in other places, 'cause there was no place to go. This would allow us the possibility of being able to use our building, um, if something occurred, um, if, if there were a cold weather shelter or something, that electricity went out, that might not necessarily require a school, but it would be a, an emergency situation.
So, are you talking about...
But at this point, the walls are not hardened.
Your main building or the annex buildings?
Where it would do the, it was looking at, actually, the south annex, our nor-, our main building and our, and our, uh, north annex as well. So, one is that we also are not able to stay on campus, um, like we are doing, uh, major emergencies, so our fiscal offices, all our operations offices move with us to the special need shelter and take up space as well. And, and it should be removed. It should be staying on our own campus, and, uh, for that reason, we're also exploring right now, and we'll talk a little bit about it later if you want to, um, is putting a generator system in to connect, um, the main building and the north annex. Right now, they are not on, we have been able in the past to borrow a generator, but we need to have that on generator power as well.
The special need clients that we had post-storm, it seems like it lingered for up to two weeks. Was it about 15 people?
Um, I think it was close to 20 that we had, that we were able to slowly, uh, move and keep, and we were able to reduce the capacity of the shelter as we went, but there were some individuals that at the very end, we were really having to debate. We were very fortunate because of the relationship at the EOC and, and some of the nursing homes, which we worked really hard during, um, during the height of the storm, that they were, uh, actually took in individuals for us at our request, at, at, some of them at no cost to that client or to ourselves.
I see what you're trying to do. I'm good with it. All right.
Any other questions?
I'm good, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, my next, uh, comment, I'm, I am very much hesitant to, to bring this up. However, I was asked by city staff to remind our Board of County Commissioners that one of the appointments that has been, uh, discussed and, and up for appointment is your Community Redevelopment Agency, uh, member, uh, the committee, uh, still looking for one representation, one representative from the, uh, Board of County Commissioners or the designee, and that is the point or the part of this I hate to bring up. It's, I'm hesitant on who your designee might be.
I can see one clearly.
You wanna designate your new guys, that's fine, but I think it needs to be one of you. It clearly can't be me, that's why it had to be changed.
That's right.
I have a conflict.
Uh, and the reason why I, I bring this up is they, they're, they're gonna have a meeting, Mr. Reynolds, was it March or April that their next meeting is, is scheduled? Do you know?
I can't recall.
But I was asked because we've had no representation for a little while, and they're ready for us to fill that slot.
So, Mr. Suggs, it's a county commissioner or our designee?
Mm-hmm.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I don't mind asking Mr. Reynolds if he would be our designee to that Board.
Unless you'd rather, I mean, I think we need to ask the administrator if that's what he, if that's what he wants to do. I mean, he, he's...
Yeah, he's the boss.
You know, I'll be honest with you, uh, you know, Mr. Reynolds and I both have spent a lot of time on the, you know, representing the city in our, our previous careers and, uh, you know, as much as I probably hate to say this, but Mr. Reynolds is, uh, my evening schedule might be a little more flexible than Mr. Reynolds at this point. Uh, so, uh, you know, I don't know if we could get away with it, but, but if, uh, if it's the pleasure of this Board of County Commissioners, uh, I would accept the responsibility of being a designee, and if there's an opportunity in the future, we'll see if we can't, see if Mr. Reynolds or myself can be the designee as long as it's appointed, and we'll see.
May I ask, is that an appointment by the Chairman or is that a vote from us? How is that, how is that handled? What does it say in there? Isn't it just an appointment by the Chair?
I will refer that to the Attorney.
Well, it's a, it's a board representative, so I would say that would be the whole board to vote on that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I, I make a motion that we appoint Mr. Suggs as a representative on that Board?
You most certainly can. Do we have a second?
Sure, I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
All the guys at the other end, aye.
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 Okay.
They asleep on you down there, Mr. Chairman.
Do you have any comment? We have no comment? Then you are the designated appointee.
Yes, the only comment I would have, Mr. Chairman, is Mr. Reynolds, you used to remember, he owes me one. Um, the, the other comments that I have are very quick. Uh, I do applaud Mr. Brown again, uh, for public recognition. Way to go, Mr. Brown. That's exactly what we're striving to do here. Public recognition by your peers and, and those that we serve is outstanding. Thank you so much. And also, uh, Mr. Brown got the memo this morning, so, uh, good job, sir.
Yeah.
Um, last but not least is a complaint. Uh, we did receive a complaint, uh, on February 22nd. I think it's very, very appropriate that I bring it up because I don't get these complaints very often, and, uh, so, uh, I'm just gonna read the complaint. It came in on, uh, February 22nd at 10:28 PM, so someone had some time. Uh, I just want to register a complaint, exclamation point. I want to complain that I do not have anything to complain about.
Yeah.
Thank you for the jo-, good job you are doing. Your friend, Quincy Masters. So, uh, that came in on, through our help desk, and I just, you know, it's not often that we get the opportunity to be thanked and thanked publicly, and you Commissioners are doing an outstanding job. This is one of your citizens who believes that all five of you are doing an outstanding job, and I thought it was appropriate to share that this morning. And with that, Mr. Chair, I will close my comments.
All right, thank you. Mr. Manning?
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Manning, and then let's start with Mr. Libel.
Um, just a reminder, it is Isaiah Festival Weekend, and the Zayas are cooperating this year. The, the county's looking really pretty, but, um, remind everybody, the Mayor's Reception, if you haven't attended in a few years, is, uh, Mayor Hill has just really, uh, put his touch on this event and the city of Palatka, and I wanna commend them and encourage people to come out to it. It's really a great event. He always has live music, uh, the food is wonderful, it's just a great setting under the old Magnolias at the Bronson Mulholland House, so I wanna encourage everyone to come out and enjoy that. And that's all I have this week. Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pickens?
Uh, good meeting. Um, I think we got a lot accomplished today, um, and just wanna welcome Matt Reynolds aboard and, uh, look forward, um, to working with you.
All right. Mr. Turner?
The same here. I'd like to, uh, welcome Matt onboard as a part of our crew, and I think he's gonna do a fine job with us, and if any, if, uh, everything he did at Palatka shows what he's gonna do here, I think we're gonna be very proud to have him. So, uh, uh, welcome, welcome aboard, Matt, and, uh, and, uh, also, I'd like to say myself that I think this is a very good meeting. I think that everybody worked well together, and I think there was unity on the board, so I think that's a, a wonderful time when we can make that happen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I do wanna welcome Matt, as we did yesterday, and, and look forward to many and great things with you coming onboard. Uh, also, do wanna recognize what Commissioner Libel said, this Saturday is Isaiah Festival, starting Friday night with the Mayor's Reception, but I am in charge of the parade on Saturday morning at 10 o'clock.
Well, I didn't speak about it.
And I thank you, Mr. Libel. And I do wanna see everybody there. If you, I sent an email out the other day about what we possibly could do, uh, but if you'd like to do that, we can make that happen, and, um, we'll get candy and throw out to all the deserving children that line the pathway. And I do wanna say why I have the microphone. Mr. Tompkins, you got kudos the other night at the Rotary Wild Game Fest Feast. Mr. Robert Browning over in East Palatka said you've been most helpful, uh, and he wanted the citizens of Putnam County to know that you have answered his phone calls and you have helped him as much as you possibly could. So, thank you very much. I know that your job is not an easy job at Public Works, and I know there's a lot of balls in the air, but, um, he wanted you to know how much he appreciated it. Mr. Chairman, that will end my comments, sir.
Thank you very much. I wanted to add on, besides the parade and the festival, there's also gonna be, it's the second kidney cancer awareness that's gonna be down near the riverfront. It's gonna be, uh, at 9 o'clock, basically the same time as, as all the other events there, and, and with the events, it's, it's amazing to me, anybody who sits around in Putnam County and says there's nothing to do on the weekend, there's something going on everywhere, somewhere in Putnam County. It's a, it's amazing to me. I know, uh, the sheriff has to stay pretty busy, 'cause there's always something going on. But I wanted to say too, is, is how proud I am. Uh, uh, it is just so nice to go out in the community, and the community sees what's going on, that the, the staff, our, our, our departments are working well together, and I am very proud to be part of this Commission up here.